Thank you, everyone. I think we have a lot of competition tonight. I see a small crowd, so hopefully we'll get through this meeting quickly. Mr. Newmeyer, closed session report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No closed session report on legally reportable items, but the City Council asked me to clarify that on the closed session listing for today's closed session meeting, the phrase was used for two of the three real estate, real property negotiations considered, quote, "various potentially interested parties." That was to indicate that if the city was to do an RFP for a lease and/or property purchase in the future, that those parties are what were being referred to. All parties that the city is in active negotiation with for any lease or purchase of property, what listed on here. So there's no list of active negotiation, negotiating parties that weren't listed. So I hope that clears up some of the questions about the closed session agenda listing.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. With that, we're going to move into Mayor and Council updates and reports. I'm going to kick off and then pass it down. I had several meetings that I attended, but I'm not going to share them all just for the sake of getting through everyone else's. What I want to focus on is thanking everyone who came out for the city's 60th anniversary. Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we celebrated the incorporation of the city of Morro Bay, which was actually in July. And I want to do a shout out to several people, first and foremost to our Recreation Department and our department head and assistant to Kirk and Angelica, their team. They were there through all this, several months of meetings, and it was just a wonderful event. Thank you to the Police Department and all the volunteers for their work at the parade and down at the Founder's Day event, to the Kiwanis who came and cooked hot dogs for us all, to the White Caps who played at the Saturday event, all the other departments that volunteered, Public Works, the Fire Department. And we had 34 entries in the parade. It was a lot of fun. Everybody had a good time. Toons at Tideland's Thursday night was phenomenal. It was absolutely beautiful and a great event that's put on by our local seniors. Three more weeks of that, so if you have an opportunity, four to six, head down to Toons at Tideland's. Just so much fun and just truly was honored to represent this city. So thank you all for coming out and thank you to everybody who helped make the event so great. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Barton.
I think you touched on everything I was planning to say. This has just been a lovely few days of all kinds of exciting activities. So glad to live in Morro Bay.
Hi, Smear.
I agree. Even the weather cooperated. The weather was just like phenomenal for Toons at Tideland's and all the other, the parade, everything else that happened. And with that, I think, she's probably going to hate me, but I do want to call out, I mean, thank all the volunteers and staff that helped, but also the mayor for all the extra addition that she added to the chef's kiss to everything. She really, I think she was at every single, she planned, she was part of the planning process. She was at every single minute of every event. What else did you do? Provided, like provided food, gave the city, the city saved money because she helped purchase the food. She donated money to buy the buttons. She, and then she provided charcuterie boards for staff. And so we're just so lucky. I also wanted to say that Councilmember Edwards and I were part of the Downtown Design District final meeting, and that went so well, like better than could be expected. Director Singwald handled it really well and we're, I'm very positive moving forward with the public meeting to come. And then I want to remind everyone about my town hall meeting on Sunday, the 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Community Center on, the subject will be homelessness. And I'm doing it differently. This, my, I usually just present the subject and then let the audience ask questions. That part will be the same, but I'm going to have a panel that will, of people that are fluent in the realm of homelessness, and they will be presenting the different aspects of what they work in. So, and then the audience can ask them questions. So if you can make it, please come and tell your friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Mayor Protem Landrum. The Downtown Design District Committee, really that last meeting, I think, closed out in such a thorough, very collaborative and really culminated in what I think will be a report that some really viable outcomes come out of it, that Mayor Protem and myself can make recommendations to council. So I'm looking forward to that public forum as well. As far as the 60th, I think one of my favorite parts honestly was riding in the convertible with this group right here. And not only people screaming out to the mayor, but the people from the hotel rooms and the balconies yelling out at us. I mean, it was a perfect, wonderful, wonderful kind of gathering of community and our tourists alike. So that was a very great weekend and event. So on the business side, I am liaison to CFAC, which is our Citizen Finance Committee. And we had requested by CFAC itself, through the staff, a presentation put together by Ken Brown from HDL. And this presentation was essentially a history of the revenues and projects, both looking back and forward from a 10-year compound growth comparison, looking at trends and outlooks versus the state, as well as including our population, types of industries and jobs, and both online and brick and mortar business. I found it to be really incredible. I think it was very interesting in terms of speaking to what is vital for us to be looking at in the well-being of our future as a city, and that is revenue streams. In addition to that, there will be a subcommittee being formed on request of CFAC as well. This is the second thing that happened on August 20th, and specifically looking at actionable recommendations to increase both the general fund and sales tax revenues, something that I know this council has really wanted to dive into. And I am personally wanting to thank CFAC as well as Emily Conrad and her staff for taking a closer look at this. And I am absolutely looking forward to hopefully something like this culminating in discussion before council. So thank you, Emily.
I guess that's me. I will echo quickly the sentiments that have been said about the 60th Anniversary Founder's Day events, having participated in the 50th and then again in the 60th. It's just so wonderful to see where we, you know, where we are, where we've come from, where we're going. And I have to say, I was really thankful that my husband filmed like the entire parade because I got a chance to view all of the floats that I didn't get to see because we were in it. And it was so great because it was like, wow, all of the pieces of Morro Bay that come together that really keep the city running and beautified and really support our city. So many elements were represented there, and so it was really beautiful. And again, thank you to the mayor and to the committee and to our departments that worked really hard to make it happen. So, and it being a free event for everyone to go, again, I love these free events that our, that our community can participate in. So, and one last thing, I will be participating on a panel for the Breakfast by the Bay, the next one in September, on September 18th, starts at around 7:30. I think we start the actual presentation around 8:00. We'll be talking about the Governmental Affairs Committee and their role. And I won't be telling you about the role, but I'll be telling you about how we interact with the GAC, as they're called. And so hopefully I get to see you guys there. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I had one last item, aside from thanking my husband for also running around and somehow popping up like, where's Waldo here and there with a camera? It was wild. Lastly, I wanted to speak to the Slow County Creeks to Coast Cleanup. I didn't want to forget this, and I almost did. Saturday, September 21st, it includes Morro Bay, Dog Beach to the mouth of Torrel Creek, and then to 24th Street in Cayucas. So that whole area. It's being sponsored by Morro Bay and Bloom, but is put on by Echo Slow. And so you can get to registration through morrobayandbloom.org, but also registering through echoslow.com. Their sign up is on the, somewhere on the front page there, if you scroll down, it's Genesis page, and that's where you can register for that. So hope to see you out there.
Thank you, councilmembers. And I'm going to backpedal because I would be remiss if I did not include three other people that I inadvertently, I didn't bring my list with me. So I apologize if I forgot you. But I want to do a huge shout out also for the 60th Anniversary Celebration to members of the Morro Bay Park and Recreation Advisory Board, mainly Betty Winholz. Thank you, Betty. She put our quilt up on the wall back there. That's from the 50th Anniversary, and it's been stored away for 10 years. So this was an opportunity to put it up so everybody could see it. And it was a community quilt that different members in the community did blocks for, and we still have it 10 years later. So thank you, Betty, and the rest of your group. Also, thank you to Michael Wambach and Visit Morro Bay and Visit Morro Bay's generosity to be a major sponsor financially for the event, as well as participating down there. And then to the Morro Bay Chamber and Jody, who served on our committee. Thank you all. With that, I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple things to give a quick update. And I had a meeting with the County Library and then County Social Service folks yesterday. And then we talked about potential use of a library property for Narlock's box and then for foot bank, foot delivery program. And I invited them to come before City Council to make a presentation at a future meeting. We can sort out those details later. And the other, the other thing I wanted to take this opportunity to share with council and the public is that at last the City Council meeting, at Mayor Protem's request, council directed staff to look into our ordinance regarding battery storage facility. And I wanted to let the public know that the planning, that the planning department under the, the planning team under the Community Development Department is doing some research on that. And I know I will get emails from the public, ask us if we're doing anything about it. So we're working on it. Just, I wanted to let, share that, especially Mr. Singwald is not here. So I want to say that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Kimball. Subcommittee reports and updates. Mr. Qualick, anything with the water reclamation facility?
Thank you, Mayor. No update.
Thank you very much. Mr. Singwald, is he remote? No, he's not remote. Okay. Thank you.
Let me fill in. And on the battery plant project, Subcommittee has not met. Staff is working on a variety of information. And we are, this is repetition of a information, we, piece of information we talked about last, last week, when staff have a presentation scheduled for next City Council meeting on process, and then the offsite analysis that the fire chief had been on lead for. And regarding offshore wind energy, that Subcommittee, Subcommittee met and discussed one item. The city is looking into partner with the Slow County for a, one, for a grant that Slow County was granted for facility, infrastructure facility study in regards to offshore wind energy. And it appears that the city, along with Port San Luis and Cal Poly, are going to receive some funding as well, in addition to a countywide study. On this one, I want to take a moment, take a pause, take a moment to, to really give a shout out to Mayor and Mayor Protem. These, you two have been the Subcommittee member. And I want to say that it was, the shout outs that when I first started a year ago, this was a new thing, offshore wind energy. And then I had to start studying it along with City Council members and the public. And then we, we have no funding, and I just very, very, very thankful for Mayor and Mayor Protem's encouragement and your push that, that we need to talk with regional, our regional parties, and so that we can get some funding, because we don't have funding to adequately handle the needs of offshore wind. And then under your leadership, we had done that, and we are actually looking, it looking like we're going to get some, some share of funding from the county. So I think that's, that's really a good, a huge accomplishment. That's the start of the partnership, and that's the start of us getting some needed, needed dollar to, to do what we need to do. So again, I thank Mayor and Mayor Protem. Of course, the City Council, you along the way, give us that kind of support and that kind of direction. So we're thankful for that. And since Mr. Singwald is not here, I'm going to do a Downtown Design, as well. And as Councilmember Edwards and Mayor Protem Landrum stated, Downtown Design District Subcommittee met, and it sounded like a very, 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 the meeting went a little while. And so the next step would be a public meeting. And so we're, staff is working on that.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. And just to add on to that offshore wind, for clarity, the funding right now that the county has was a grant that was given to them, or funding that was given to them by the state as a pass through. And they were actually hearing that item at the Board of Supervisors today. And the capacity that we are listed in that is that they will hire the consultant, which looks like it will most likely be Matt McDonald, who did some consulting work for the original reach study. And they will be looking at the three locations, as you had said, Cal Poly, East Pier, Port San Luis, and Morro Bay. We were able to interject into those requests, what our concerns and challenges are. So we were able to add a lot of the questions we have that we'd like the pros and cons on for environmental balance, and those things kind of at the forefront of our assessment. So just to share that with the community. And then hopefully, if there's some funding left over from that initial study, there'll be some funds that'll be passed down that we can use for some staff studies and capacity. So thank you. With that, I will open public comment. I have four speaker slips to start off with. Gary Johnson, followed by Linda Winters, followed by John and Natalie.
We did have a great party Saturday. It's always part of it, part of it with the school. Hey, I'll get three minutes. Good. Anyway, going to the mayor and the City Council and the citizens of Morro Bay and Police Department, Police Department. Excuse me, I just had a tooth pull. And I'm on a little paint killer, so I'm kind of slurring my words a little bit, but stay with me. I do want to say I'm very, very excited. I've been trying to get on the rock station on 97.3, and I finally made it. And I'm going to be on there Saturday morning at 9:00. And I'll be talking about, of course, batteries. It's going to be a good show. I want to talk about the past, present, and what's happening in the future, the technology wise. It's going to, I'm not going to pick on any particular company or whatever. I'm going to give the overall picture. So I'm really looking forward to that. And also, I want to say that what happened in Escudillo last week was very disturbing. There was another failure due to the storage facility. No matter what kind of incident you have inside of the storage, you have to evacuate people because you don't know exactly what's inside at that time. And they did have to evacuate dozens of businesses and schools and so forth. So it was rather disturbing when I saw that. Now, the county supervisor of that District Five, Jim Desmond, he, I'm quoting what he's, we're getting too many fires from these types of battery storages, okay, the Phils' facilities. And we need to get some more, unfortunately, some more regulations in place to make sure it's going to be safe. And going on to say, some of the city leaders, that we're getting into new territory, which we are. It's a relatively new technology for the last 10 years or so. With the construction of these battery storage facilities, we need to move forward in a way to protect our communities, like our communities, while meeting our climate goals. And I'm eager for the county staff now to come back with their recommendations for the county of San Diego. And then I just found out, the town in Riverside County, it's called, it's M E N I F E E, they're just going to, this year, they're going to put online one of the world's largest storage ion, lithium ion battery facilities. I was surprised it's going to be that huge in a population of 120,000 people. And that's known by Temecula in that area. Also, I just, I'll just sidetracks, I've got 14 seconds. There is new technology down the road. Lithium's not going to be here forever. And so I'm going to explain all that on, on Saturday, because I get 40 minutes instead of three. Thank you all. You all have a good one now. And again, great party.
I love this town. Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and the chiefs, or commander in this case. My name is Linda Winters, 30-year resident of, right here in Morro Bay. The key word for my speech today is fun, fun, fun. This is all because of the Morro Bay's 60th Birthday Celebration and Saturday's Parade. It was the only event I got to attend, so I planned my route, parking north of the route so that I could get out of town easily after the parade, so I could go to another special birthday party. I walked down Market Street to get to Morro Bay Boulevard, stopping at Market and Harbor, to ask a police volunteer if this was going to, going to be the part of the return route of the parade. He said, I don't know. They just told me to stand here. And that's what he was doing. And it told him he was doing a really good job. So I went to Morro Bay Boulevard, turned left, walked a couple of blocks, and saw the beginning of the parade, waving to the trucks and trolley with all of you, and all of you saying hi to me. And that was really neat. And then after a while, a couple by me asked if I knew everybody. And I said, well, not, not everybody. I moved up the street a few blocks, running into Camille, who used to drive for Morro Bay Transit in the trolley for a lot of years. And we collectively greeted floats and businesses that had floats. Once again, we knew lots of folks that both of us knew, and they knew us. I'd be hard pressed to say if, if I had a favorite float, but I will say that the band on Central Coast Music, led by 2024's Living Treasure, Ed, was so good. And then there was the one with the heavy equipment on it, and they had a darling little guy who got to sit on top of the equipment, and he looked like he was king stuff. He had a grid that would light up the world. Not to be forgotten, Mike's Barbershop, with our 2024 Citizen of the Year, John Elliott, giving someone a haircut. Wonder how that turned out. I just need to let everyone, tell everyone that organized this whole event and give kudos to every single one of them. And that's, it makes me proud to be a citizen here in this city and call it home. Thank you so much, and I'll see you next meeting.
Hello, Natalie Teichman.
John Novacek, thank you for having us today. Just want to say I'm incredibly honored to be here and have an opportunity to speak and to stand. Oh, I'm just happy to be here and to stand next to you.
Thank you, John. Thank you again for giving us the time to speak. I'll be addressing the item on the closed session agenda about 781 Market Ave. And I wanted to share just a little bit more about myself. As you know, I'm currently a public school teacher, and I have been since 2008. And now I'm a business owner here. And working in the public sector for so long, my eye has never been on money. It's been on education, compassion, care, wellness, and the future. However, in cases such as this one regarding the sale and highest and best use of 781 Market, I know that money matters, and revenue is the bottom line. So I'll try my best to talk a little bit about money and revenue. Measuring the revenue that we bring to this city is not as easy as with other retail shops or businesses because we mainly provide a service. We draw people to the area, and then they go spend their money at other local businesses, meaning the revenue we generate shows up on other businesses' balance sheets. The beautiful thing about our business is it's completely complimentary to the revenue goals of the city. Instead of creating hotel rooms that will sit half empty through the entire year, our business plan is to create more revenue by bringing in clients from new locations. Our out-of-town clients have left reviews saying they will be back to Morro Bay for the sole purpose of coming to our studio. That means they'll come to Morro Bay, they'll stay in a hotel, they'll shop at the local stores, they'll dine at the restaurants. And again, this revenue is not directly measured by us. It's going to show up on other businesses' balance sheets. And it's challenging as well to put a monetary value on the culture that we're bringing to Morro Bay. Just as it's hard to monetize the sand, the beach, the wildlife here, yet we know those too bring people to Morro Bay. And we are an integral part of the culture of Morro Bay and have done a lot of good in one year that we've been open. We continue to put money into marketing and outreach to bring more people to Morro Bay, which will in turn bring more money to Morro Bay. And not only that, we want to give the locals a reason to stay. We're concerned that another big hotel will only cater to tourists and drive locals out. And then what will we have left here for our kids and future generations? How do we monetize quality of life? The building we now occupy was vacant. It was neglected and dirty. We created new life in a space that was dead and made it a place that people call a sanctuary, a safe space to heal, rest, replenish, connect with others. We also partner with local businesses for our events, hiring local business owners for our one-year birthday party recently. So we're putting the money that we earned back into the community. And I know you mentioned you like free events. This week, all week, classes are free. So come out, take a free class. Everyone is welcome. That's our gift for our one-year celebration. And so we hope that we respect every decision you make, and we trust that it'll be the good one. But please consider all the options and extending our lease and giving this big decision the proper time and care and attention it needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have one more speaker slip after that public comment. We'll be open to everyone. Rachel Wilson, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council, and staff. My name is Rachel Wilson. We own the land. Those were the four words that David Jaeger of Vistra used when I asked him in September of 2022 why the Embarcadero was the best place to put best. Now, I happen to really value property ownership, and I understand the concept of we own the land. So therefore, I should be able to do anything I want on my So therefore, I should be able to do anything I want on my land. Next slide, please. I grew up on a large farm that spanned between Kettelman City and Lemoore. It was literally in the middle of nowhere. I grew up seven miles from the nearest town, 15 miles from my nearest friend, 26 miles from high school. If we built a new barn, or a new home, or a new BES, it would impact no one, because as you can see right there, it would be literally in the middle of nowhere. Next slide, please. When the power plant was built in the 1950s, it too sat out somewhat in the middle of nowhere. It was surrounded by lots of open space. That, unfortunately, is no longer the case. Next slide, please. "We Own the Land" has a different meaning today when looking at the property on the Embarcadero. We need to consider all who are neighbors, all who own the neighboring land and their property and economic rights. And foremost of these rights should be the right to be safe in their homes and businesses. Next slide, please. It is your job as city council members to make their safety the paramount consideration as you consider the proposal to build a BES on the Embarcadero. Can you ensure that there will not be a fire if BES is built? Can you ensure that Morro Bay will be safe? The cities of Escondido and Ote Mesa could not. And if you're looking at this, they had to evacuate the schools, shut them down. And in the Escondido fire, they had to evacuate 500 businesses. Next slide, please. The only way to ensure safety when BES is a neighbor is to build it out in the middle of nowhere. And that is where BES should be built. That is why I'm very happy to hear that Morro Bay is considering a proposal for a moratorium on accepting any new proposed BES projects until safe siting guidelines have been written. This moratorium, though, would not protect the property rights of those who live and work near the farm. But fortunately, you have the power to protect your neighbors. You can vote to keep the land use as visitors-serving commercial. All of the economic benefits in the world would not be enough if your neighbors are harmed. Thank you.
Betty Winholz. Would like to thank everyone also for the parade. Got my shirt on. It was a great party, and I appreciate the recognition of the Rec and Parks Commission, because four of our five commissioners were out there on Saturday, working hard, along with everyone else. And I would like to invite the public to come to our meeting, which will be this month. It's the third Thursday of every month in this very room. So not this Thursday, but a week from this Thursday, we'll be here if you want to come hear what we're talking about in terms of maybe Cloisters Park and other items that will be on our agenda. You can check the city website to see what we will be discussing. I wanted to, in reference to the quilt, and the comments that I heard from people who attended the parade and the events down at Thailand's, they said, "Why do we have to wait 10 more years for the next parade?" So I'm just suggesting, putting it out there, that you consider maybe we don't have to wait 10 years. Maybe it'll be five, maybe it'll be two, maybe it will be one. But it was a great time, and that was the talk that I heard in terms of feedback, that it was that good of a time. Regarding the comment that the mayor made about a Mot McDonald, I do know that the Board of Supervisors met on that this morning. I'm sure they got the contract. And they use this term, and I don't know what it means, and I don't know if anyone here knows what it means, but that we will get the leftover money for subservient contracts. And I don't know what the heck that means, so maybe that's something that the city attorney knows, or the subcommittee knows, and maybe that can be explained to the public. And then my last little comment is, in coming to the meeting tonight, you know that intersection at Beach and Main Street? It's almost worse than 41 and Main, frankly, because you know everyone coming up that hill is a tourist, and everybody coming up the other hill is a tourist. And so some guy was just tailgating the next guy, and I almost got hit. And so my request is, and I don't think it's there, but could we on all our four-way stops say something? You know how they have those little red signs under the stop sign that says, "All directions stop," or? I think the police know what I'm talking about, or Mr. Qualick does. That maybe we need to start putting those at some of our intersections where there are four-way stops, so people know to take turns.
Another sign for people to ignore. There are lots of reasons I come to speak here. One of those is self-defense. A few years ago, I barely survived attempted murder here in our quaint little town. It was intended to silence me and to protect a violent rapist, as well as our town's own reputation. Instead, inspired me to go to war. I'm no stranger to terrorism. I was living in DC while two people were driving around shooting folks at gas stations, the infamous DC snipers. My mom refused to allow anyone to control her life through fear, and so would crouch and dash from the car to the pump. I never felt that much animosity towards these people, because after all, this is what war looks like. Their victims were killed by the ones that drove those men to such insanity. How can you say that? Those Muslims are savages and want us all dead because they hate how free we are. Don't you know what tomorrow is? Yeah, I do. Tomorrow is the 23rd anniversary of the deaths of 2,700 people. Would you like to know what today is? Today is the 23rd anniversary of the death of one person, me. I drowned in a lake, and for three minutes, my heart did not beat. I remember the waters closing in around me, the choking darkness. I was about five years old, and ever since, I have had to occasionally ask myself if, in fact, I did not survive that incident. Perhaps the world that I've known since then is hell. And why not? The world that I live in is definitely not the same one that I died in. When I woke up, I found myself surrounded by people enraged, frothing at the mouth and baying for blood. My grandfather, that went to war, saw the elephant and came back, taught me to respect the flag and believe the things that it was supposed to stand for. When I was still in elementary school, I realized that I actually believed in justice and equality for all. And that is why I have never again stood for the Pledge of Allegiance, not since I was less than 10 years old. But maybe that's not the only reason. Maybe it was also my other grandfather, who never went to war, but still nearly throttled me when I told him I wouldn't go to war. To kill someone I would never otherwise meet just for the sin of defending their own home. The first to teach me to despise words of wisdom from such fools. The one who shaved my head to keep me from looking like a girl and laid the groundwork that a few years later, when my parents and the doctors said they were going to fix me, I believed them and let them cut out my gonads and stitched them back on somewhere they didn't belong. I am a loving, caring, kind, and empathetic person, but there are few that feel the true depths of my kindness, because far too many have punished me for it. You don't get that person. You get the person shaped by the world you've helped to perpetuate. You think playing the game and following the rules is what matters, but my greatest act of rebellion is nonparticipation. My greatest act of sabotage is to know your sins. You shouldn't have tried to have me killed, because I was raised to own people like you. And my voice is my sharpest sword and my toughest shield.
Anyone else for public comment?
City Council, staff. Michelle Lester-Catering, North Morro Bay. About two months ago, I brought to the attention the burnt-out house on Trinidad Street. And I asked for the fire chief and the police chief, as well as the arland, to take a look at what the current status was on that and about getting some kind of, I don't know, either the house condemned, the house taken down, the house boarded up, fencing, something to keep out the people that continue to go in. The tag that was on the house is faded and no longer visible, that it is a condemned house. It still stinks to high heaven because of the rodents, the feral cats that live in there, and just the general smell of a burnt-out home. So again, I'd like to find out some information about that and where it currently stands. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP, are there any raised hands?
Mayor Wixson, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much with that. I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I'm gonna be remiss again. Two more people. I see Nancy Johnson in here. Thank you, Nancy Johnson, for your help with the 60th anniversary. She is the Dahlia Queen, our city flower, and also the Morro Bay Art Association. Thank you for all your help this weekend. They were beautiful, beautiful flowers. Chief, any comment that you could share on the Trinidad?
At this time, we're working with the city attorney and community development, trying to figure out a path forward. It's a complicated issue with some legal issues with the homeowners, so there's not a simple solution for it. So we're still working on it.
Mayor, I could say that, to that point that the fire chief made, community development director Singh Walden and I actually talked about that earlier this week. And we're moving forward on some options for the city to address the problem.
Is the holdup because of some sort of legal situation?
There are some complications due to who holds title.
Okay. Thank you for that. Perhaps when you have something better for us, you can share that update.
Sure.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Betty Winholz, I'd like to speak to item 7D, which is about the Kroger money. And I wrote you all an email and asked four questions, and just asking if you could answer those for us. If the city is not going to use the money due to record-keeping requirements, why are we even part of this settlement? Number two, is the city a participant to make or give the money to the county? Is that, who's gonna be the beneficiary here? Three, how is the county going to use the money? And does, will the county let us know how they spent our money? And then the last question is, why would the city not accept the money anyways, so we can give it to the Morro Bay rehab place on North Main Street? Thank you.
I will also be speaking to item 7D. I can't tell you how amusing I find it to consider that folks like us are the ones who get to decide how to determine how to rectify the harms of opioids. I know, I know, we're planning on passing the buck, but there's still not much difference. For one thing, it's important to point out that you can't pay somebody off for ruining their life. I know that's how our society is supposed to work. People die, the responsible party pays out a bunch of money, then everything just keeps on going. How many people did PG&E kill? And I still see their ads. Chemical spill, workplace accident, slander, murder, psychological manipulation, good business. So long as they can afford the fines, that's just the cost of doing business. Morality is for poor people. True, I'm so bourgeois, I had an in-ground pool when I was a kid and an au pair from Germany. None of my family members have ever been addicted to opioids. No, our connection runs far deeper than that. My entire childhood, my uncle was writing bills for the pharmaceuticals lobby. The last time I talked with them, they were allowing somebody from the State Department to sleep on their couch. It's not as though I'm ignorant to the impacts of this sort of callousness. After my grandfather survived the Rhineland campaign, he came home, went to Bible school, got married, built a house, and raised three sons. Of course, those boys wanted nothing to do with that town. As soon as my grandparents died, they sold that house. Despite being uncomfortable with the guilt of owning stolen land, I would still have very much appreciated living in the house my grandfather had built with his own two hands. This was never an option, because my family had already given up so much to rise above the sweat, the toil, and the filth. How could they, as members of high society, claim any loyalty to a town with one of the highest rates of prescription drug abuse cases per capita of any town in the US? As if responsibility only lies with the people that made these drugs. What about the people that chose to turn a blind eye? What about the people that gave these people space to sell their lies and poisons? How many of you profited and now rely on violence to protect your gains? Do you think about how your money, time, and attention are used to take away our future? In the words of Leonard Cohen, "Now, you can say that I've grown bitter, but of this you may be sure. The rich have got their channels in the bedrooms of the poor, and there's a mighty judgment coming, but I may be wrong." You see, I hear these funny voices in the Tower of Song.
Consent agenda, public comment is open. And I would remind everyone that it is on the consent items. I'm going to veer from this one minute. If you will all indulge me, please. I missed a presentation, and they're waiting to come up. Counsel. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Ariann Gustafson from the San Luis Obispo Bike Club. We have our 53rd cycling event. It's gonna be Saturday, September 28th. It's gonna be based out of Morro Bay. It's gonna start and end at Morro Bay High School. We're gonna have over, almost 1,000 participants that will be here. We have a significant number of those that will actually be staying here in hotels, using the restaurants, et cetera. Anyways, quick things. So it begins and ends in Morro Bay. It goes as far north as Piedras Blancas Lighthouse and returns. We have a variety of routes. We're gonna have five rest stops along the route, including Denotti Winery up on Highway 46, Shamel Park and Pine Dorado, rest stops in Cambria, Cypress Overlook, and also Luck Cruz Rock. No, roads will be closed, so there's not gonna be any problems or disruptions with traffic. It's hosted by the San Luis Obispo Bike Club volunteers. Along with, we get support from local bike shops, ham radio clubs, BikeSlow, and a variety of other organizations. And we'll also have then a meal at the high school afterwards. We're gonna have two CHP units to patrol for safety and monitor bike and bicycle and auto traffic. We'll have our Morro Bay Police volunteers here. At the start of the event, we're gonna have SAG events, or SAG, sorry, SAG vehicles, ham operators, bike mechanics at all the various stops. And essentially, the money that we earn here goes to support the local communities. So goes to BikeSlow County, Morro Bay High School, and Volunteer Police, the Sheriff Christmas Children's Bike Giveaway, Cal Poly Cycling, the amateur radio club for both Cal Poly and Astero, sorry, the Astero Club also. So in the last time, 74% of the accommodations were stayed here in Morro Bay. And over 90% of people recommend the event to their friends. So we're hoping on the 28th, we'll see a lot of folks out here enjoying our beautiful community, also shopping at the restaurant, or shopping in the shops and eating in our restaurants. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Moving back to the consent agenda, anyone else for public comment on items on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Mayor Wixson, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much with that. I will close the consent agenda, public comment, bring it back to council. Does anyone wish to pull any of the items 7A through 7- Does anyone wish to pull any of the items 7A through 7D? To my left, to my right. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Um, motion to, um, approve consent agenda items 7A through 7D.
And do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the fun part, Advisory Board Appointments and Interviews. Um, we had one applicant for our, um, CFAC Board and two for our CTAC. So at this point, um, I would like to invite Sarah, who has applied for our Citizens Finance Committee, up to the podium. And, um, no competition here. You're a one, one woman wonder. If you could just give us some information, a little bit of your background, and, um, we may have a few questions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, thank you and good evening, Mayor Wixson, council members, staff, and fellow Morro Bay residents. Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present myself as a candidate for the Citizens Finance Committee, CFAC. My background in fiscal oversight and public policy, particularly in special education, I believe has equipped me with the skills to understand complex budgets, ensure compliance with regulations, both state and federal, and manage fiscal resources responsibly. Um, in my current role as a program associate at WestEd and a technical assistance provider at, uh, the National Center for Systemic Improvement, I've worked closely with federal funding guidelines and also on a contractual basis, um, with various state departments of education, doing federal audit prep, desk audit reviews for school districts, um, review and writing internal policies and procedures, uh, that are in compliance with federal laws and regulations, and reviewing other financial documents, like expenditure reports and budgets. So, um, I think my skills align closely with this vacancy, and I'm confident that my dedication to public service aligns with the responsibilities as well. Um, I look forward to contributing to the fiscal health and future of Morro Bay. And I'll add, on a personal note, um, my fiance, Eli and I, the sh- the shanty hat, uh, we moved to Morro Bay a little over two years ago, and we love this town, and we can really see ourselves, you know, having a long future here and caring about future generations' experience and keeping this town thriving and beautiful. So, um, thank you for your consideration of my candidacy, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions? Yes, please.
Welcome, Sarah. Um, I'm the liaison to CFAC, so I'm particularly, uh, happy to meet you and looking forward to, uh, working with you. Um, I, I, I think that, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations. It sounds like you're going to be getting married at Coles Bookstore?
Yeah.
If I read that correctly?
Next month. Yes, it's coming up. Thank you.
Very cool. And supporting a local business here, even more fabulous. Uh, so, um, appreciate hearing that and very excited for you. And that's been in my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards.
Any questions to my right? Councilmember Burton?
Um, no, I hadn't, I was going to comment on the, the wedding since you didn't mention it, and I happened to see it, and so, um, congratulations as well.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Protem?
I, I had never heard the term zillennial before. That's a new one for me. Um, I, I'm, I think it's great to have, um, the perspective of a zillennial, and, um, I appreciate your applying. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm, I was born in 96, so I'm right on the cusp of millennial and Gen Z. I don't know which one to claim, so I'll go with zillennial.
I like that.
Yeah.
She forms a new term. Yes.
I have a quick question for you. First and foremost, thank you for being willing to step up, especially being a newcomer to our, well, new-ish comer to our city, and I'm already jumping in. Um, I have a question regarding, how did you, um, how did you hear about this position? Because I think it's important, we're always trying to recruit, so I love to hear how people hear about these openings.
Totally. Yeah, thank you for your question. Um, I, funnily enough, I actually read about it, uh, in the Astero Bay newspaper while I was waiting for a table at LoLo's, their final weekend.
That's great. Thank you for letting me know. That's, that's really good input, so. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. With that, I will make a motion to approve the appointment, um, for our CFAC Advisory Board and ask for a second.
I second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Congratulations on your upcoming wedding, and I have met your fiance, Eli. He's a wonderful man. Thank you.
Thank you. I think so, too.
For your willingness to join there.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And with that, I would like to invite the two applicants for CTAC up to have a seat so that we might ask you a few questions, and Mr. Qualick maybe could bump back one for a few minutes. We're going to ask you to grab a seat over here on the side. Sorry, Greg. Thank you very much for joining us, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, I'm going to start out by asking each of you to just give us a very short little overview of, um, who you are and your interest in serving in this position.
I'm Jennifer Madrid, and I worked at Caltrans for the last six years, so I feel like I have some, um, background to offer.
Jennifer, can you pull the microphone a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh. Much better. Um, I've worked at Caltrans for the past eight, six years, and think that the experience has given me some good information on what, uh, goes into transportation issues, uh, as far as, um, the complete streets and, um, what issues are important to people. And, and as a resident of Morro Bay, also, I can, uh, when I go walking or driving, I have that perspective as well, so. Um, I, I, excuse me, I also have a, a master's in public policy, so, um, I do understand how government works, and that I think is helpful to know.
And hello, my name is Chris Demoville. I'm a Public Affairs and Comm Specialist with Cal Poly University Housing. Uh, prior to that role, and my family moved up here, we've been here for about two years, a little over two years as well, from Orange County. Um, I, uh, attended the University of Hawaii with a bachelor's in history, graduated in 2010, and I got involved with, uh, the nonprofits in Hawaii. That led me to work for a few sessions with the state legislature, um, passing laws. I specifically clerked the, um, the, the Houses Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce, and then the next session, I clerked the Senate Committee on Health. So two really big A bracket committees, a lot of work went down following that position. In 2016, I came back to California, grew up in Riverside County, and, um, found a job with Uptown Community Parking District in San Diego. Um, I was new to planning and transportation planning, but, um, really fell in love with it for, uh, four years, using parking meter revenue to build bike lanes, um, add extra parking spaces, and really tried to, um, build a, a, a strong multimodal culture in an urban part of San Diego. If you know the Bankers Hill neighborhood specifically, which is, um, sort of adjacent to the Five in between, uh, Balboa Park and the Five. Um, so if you're ever down there and you see the Ford and Fifth Avenue bikeways, that was a big project we did with Caltrans, Sandag, and different organizations. Um, I was looking for just jobs in colleges. I have a seven-year-old, so we, I wanted some stability. We kept applying to Cal Poly, you know, and kept trying to come up here. So, as I've been here for a few years, I'm just kind of looking at a way to expand myself in the community and, um, do more to help out. And, uh, we also had a great time at the party on Saturday.
Thank you very much. Um, I think we probably have a few questions, um, and, and I'm going to jump in and lay it off. I am the rep, oh, and I see our, our TA liaison here. Um, what, what is your interest in serving in this position, and what do you know about it? And I'll start with you, Chris.
Um, I understand how, uh, county government sort of worked to, to bridge cities, uh, together. Um, I'm, I know that the city of Morro Bay is sort of shifting its character from, uh, a city that's retirement-focused and maybe a little bit more, um, tourism-focused. Um, I've also read things about potentially adding parking meters or things like that in the business district. I have experience doing that. Um, and just, you know, I, I discovered a real love for transportation planning. I mean, I went into parking from the Health Committee, I didn't, uh, so I kind of went from life and death to some of the most intense public meetings I've ever been a part of. And I did it from the HOA level all the way up to working with state officials. So, um, just really networking through San Diego and really trying to, to just, um, build solid, solid, uh, options for people as far as transportation goes, and, um, yeah, and continuing that.
I think that, um, my experience of writing policy, uh, and regulations and procedures helps, um, because the main focus at Caltrans at least, and it's helpful elsewhere, is to make sure that things are done the same quality everywhere. But also to take into account how people want to use the roads, how they want to get around, whether or not they want to go far, and how much time they want to spend on the road. So all those things are good to take into account, and I just, uh, am retiring, so I have some time to serve. And I went into government in the first place because I thought, well, I have certain skills that I can participate in, make people's lives better. And everyone is touched by transportation somehow or other. So I think it's a good place to get involved in making people's lives better.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to start to my left. Councilmember Ford, questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, thank you both for applying for this, I, as I said before, to the other applicant. Um, I, it just, I'm very appreciative of anyone who's willing to step into a position to help our city, so thank you. Um, my question is regarding, um, San Luis Obispo, or sorry, Slocog. Um, they're working to advance efforts to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries through their Road to Zero. If you're familiar with that, um, pro, or that, that goal, how do you see Morro Bay fitting in, um, and to help the county get to zero deaths and injuries on the road?
I know that, I think considering other means of transportation and building out other means of transportation beyond cars is probably a great start. Um, you know, that's, that's, uh, I know that you still have to accommodate cars, it's still the most common form of transportation, but I think that protected, protected pedestrian infrastructure, uh, protected, protected bikeway infrastructure, I think that those are all real great parts about, um, what I see coming through in, in, for instance, I see San Luis building those. That's what we built in San Diego as well, was like a protected bikeway with pedestrian infrastructure to, um, protect them. We were able to use parking meter revenue to do that. Uh, I don't think in transportation, there's a specific silver bullet that's going to solve all the problems. Um, I think it has to be a combination of all of those things. Um, and yeah, it is a pretty hot-button topic, you know? It's, it's something that does touch everyone and, um, touches everyone emotionally, you know? Um, so, yeah, I think that the really, I mean, I know like road diets are, are a quick, quick thing, um, you know, quick, common, common, common way of doing it, but, yeah, I think just really considering multimodal transportation as, as the future.
My experience also at Caltrans has been, uh, a big push by the, you know, every time the director, uh, changes, they come up with a new program, and public safety has been the latest push, actually, that's survived several directors. Among people who are working on the roads as well as people who are using the roads. And I think a big issue that we have in, especially San Luis Obispo, is between cars and bikes and pedestrians. So, we need to look at how to separate, and I think the separated infrastructure, Chris was talking about, is a really good way to do it. But you can't always do that, so we have to keep up with looking at other ways. I, I don't have any ideas off the top of my head, uh, but I think that, um, awareness campaigns are a good place to start, uh, as well as doubling down. Somebody was commenting to me about, uh, people riding bikes here in Morro Bay and not stopping at stop signs. So, that could be a good public awareness campaign, because I don't want to hit a bike rider with my car. Uh, I would win, and I don't really want that. So, anyway.
Thank you both. I really appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards, any questions?
I appreciate, um, how you guys have incorporated your skillsets and your passion into your answers to the questions. I really appreciate that. Um, and to Councilmember Ford, I read an article today, uh, this morning, that in fact was looking at, um, the rise in fatalities, vehicular fatalities, um, in our state, and I was really saddened by that. But I think I'd like to, I guess, pull in more locally, um, and just out of curiosity, um, just wondering, since you live here in Morro Bay, what are some of the key infrastructure type things that you're seeing, uh, within our community that you may have some solutions to or, or creative ideas?
Um, I think that sometimes, uh, adding metered parking will keep people from driving as much. I think that's a nice way of, of, it's, and understanding the shoot principles of free parking as being a myth and whatnot, too, that parking is always paid. Um, I think that that's a way to encourage, uh, pedestrian activity. Um, I see personal issues with the roundabout almost every morning, where people don't understand the roundabout going through. Um, I think Morro Bay has a lack of bus transportation, and I've experienced that myself personally, where if I don't catch the bus from Cal Poly at eight o'clock, there's no other options. So I think that those are a few things we can expand. Again, I think it's really just expanding choice. I mean, really, right now, the, the, there's some bike lanes up Highway One, but you're also arriving right next to speeding cars as they're coming through. There's some good bike lanes behind, um, behind Morro Bay High School and, um, and whatnot, but again, I think it's just really expanding the choice that people have to get around. Um, I actually live next door to Camille, too, who drives the, the trolley, who used to drive the trolley, so I've talked to her about it a little bit. But yeah, I think that choice is really, is really just key, like, having more choice, you know, thinking about like Laguna Beach, where they have a more advanced trolley and parking on the outside of town to try and keep tourists from parking in town, which doesn't always work. But just things like that, you know, exploring what other cities have, have had to do, and we did that in San Diego a lot. Oh, they built this here, well, let's build it here, you know, we know we can get it through this or that. But, um, again, I'm going to just go back to it. I think it's really, there's not a, you know, there, I think that Morro Bay is very car-centric, and, um, I think that, you know, that can be fixed a little bit, you know? We could add more bus routes, we could add maybe more direct routes, express routes, things like that. Um, and then as, as, yeah, as far as like bikeways, you know, I think that if you had some really good protected bikeways going up Highway One, that would be a tourist draw in itself. You know, people would come here, people would come all over to Irvine, when I lived in Irvine, just to ride the bike routes, you know? So I've seen that, uh, be a tourist draw and whatnot. And then I personally love the roundabout, but, you know, I would put in more roundabouts, but I know maybe, um, some, that specific coming out where, um, I think, boy, what, what is that, uh, where you're, where you're trying to turn left into the roundabout, it's, it can be kind of hairy up there sometimes. So, um, you know, I think that considering that would, might, you know, some of those considerations, but I know some of that is county versus city, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton, any questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I, I would just add that, uh, I'm a huge fan of data and collecting data to see what it shows, and I think that would answer a lot of questions. And that includes asking people, uh, surveys. What, what do you have? What do you want? What do you need?
Thank you, Jennifer. Sorry.
Well, I wanted to compliment both of you on the backgrounds that you bring to this. Each of you has a tremendous resume and lots, lots of, um, years of, um, public service to, to offer, and so it's going to be a, a tough choice, I think. So, thank you.
Um, well, my fellow councilwomen did such a great job of asking questions. I just get to ask a fun one. Um, so, Mike, you, I think, have lived here two years? Chris, Chris, sorry. I, I don't know why I said that. Chris, um, you've lived here a couple of years, and you came here from San Diego, it sounds like. And Jennifer, eight years you've lived here?
No, I've actually lived, I've lived in Morro Bay about two and a half to three years.
Oh, so similar. And I, so I would just like to ask you both, could you tell me like the top three things that drew you to Morro Bay, why you chose to live here?
My sister and I were, she was from Minnesota, and we were looking for places to retire eventually. to retire eventually. And I liked the ocean, but I also liked the educational facilities nearby, and so does she. We wanted to continue to go to concerts and things. But the weather, for me, not too hot, not too cold, not too wet. And I like the fact that it's very dark in our neighborhood. We live in North Morro Bay, and there's no streetlights, so you really can see the stars. So that's pretty wonderful.
Yeah, that's special.
I spent 10 years in Hawaii, so I have to be close to the ocean. It's just a thing, you know, I mean, we've talked about different places when, at the pandemic, but it was, you know, and we used to come fishing here with the family in Morro Bay when I was a kid. There's actually a picture of me getting chased by a sea lion over before they put the fencing up on the other side of the rock, right by the jetty there, when I was a teenager. So my brother's still teasing me because it was a one-eyed sea lion that came for our bait. You know, my long-term, my girlfriend and I, we were looking for a place, we were living in Orange County, I was working in San Diego, and we were looking for a place where we could do a lot of the things we do in Orange County without having to sit on the 405 all day. And, you know, Morro Bay kind of checked all those marks. When I first came up here, we were living on campus, and, you know, we looked at a few places in Slow, but I kept pushing for us to Morro Bay because I was like, this is where we should be, you know? This is where, and, yeah, I mean, we love it. So she's, it's her first time out of the orange bubble, so it's been a lot of adjustment for her. But, yeah, we love it, we love the people, we love the friends we've made up here, and just a small-town feel.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask them where they found out about the position as well? Can I ask? Okay. How did you find out about this open position?
Walking home from Albertson's next to City Hall. I looked up at the, what the agendas were, you know, coming out of planning background, just kind of seeing what was going on with the city. And I saw the opportunity, I thought, well, I've been sort of looked, this is about the time, I'm a few years into Cal Poly, I feel pretty settled in what I'm doing. And so I was just looking for a way to expand and get onto the community a little more. It seemed like a great, great way to do it.
I also saw it in the Estero Bay News.
I want to thank you both very much. I wish we had two openings.
Okay, so I will read the votes. Councilmember Ford voted for Christopher Demovil. Councilmember Edwards voted for Christopher Demovil. And Councilmember Barton voted for Christopher Demovil. Mayor Protim Landrum voted for Jennifer Madrid. And Mayor Wixson voted for Jennifer Madrid. So we have a 3-2 vote. Christopher, you've been appointed to fill the four-year term on the C-TAC.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. There's lots of other things to volunteer for. Please don't go away far. We have advisory board seats coming up the first of the year. We'd love to see you back. With that, we will move on to item 9B, and I'm going to give just a minute for staff to get situated. This is the consolidation of Morro Bay Transit Operations Maintenance into the San Luis Obispo Regional Transit Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Greg Qualick, Public Works Director, here to talk about the proposed Morro Bay Transit consolidation with the Regional Transit Authority, the RTA. And we have a presentation tonight. It's, we've got quite a few slides. We're going to try to breeze through them, and, because I know some of you have heard this information, we did present a lot of it at P-WAB. There have been some adjustments since we presented to P-WAB upon further analysis done by our team here, which is myself and Ms. Janine Burlingame. So I'll jump right in and talk about some fun Morro Bay Transit history. It was started in 1977. Those are Airstream Arbid, Argacy models. We believe the 1976 model. And that was our old dial-a-ride. And just kind of a cool picture that still hangs out in Janine's office. And this is Morro Bay Transit now. That's a Ford F-450 converted to shuttle bus. And like I said, it was started in 1977. It originally was a dial-a-ride for a little over 30 years. And due to some funding cuts, the city got creative and changed the system into a deviated fixed route system. And that is where we have a fixed loop around the city. And the shuttle or the bus will deviate 3/4 of a mile off of that loop to pick up caller-ride riders who have called in advance and made appointments for that bus to deviate off the fixed route. COVID meant a pretty serious drop in ridership, and we'll talk about that a little later. And as a result, we had to stop Saturday service. So right now, we only go Monday through Friday on that bus route. And then we also have a trolley, as everyone knows. That began in 1994. It expanded to two routes in 2001, to three routes in 2008, and again, COVID hit. A lot of riders stopped riding. We stopped Friday and Monday service, so it is currently only a Saturday and Sunday service. In 2020, it was dropped to one route. A year later, we got back up to two routes, and that's what we have now. That's the then, and this is the now, so pretty similar in style and well-known around the community. One point I want to make here is that our transit system, just like any transit system, whether it's, you know, Tokyo, New York, LA, or Morro Bay, the system evolves. And it evolves because of funding, availability, or constraints. It evolves because of community needs, in our case, because of city goals that we may have. As an example, you know, maybe the business community would like a trolley to go into their district, and that sort of thing. And if we want to encourage business, then we might move a route, and also ridership trends. So all of these things have historically affected our system, and they'll continue to do so. And to talk about Morro Bay Transit structure, I'm going to kick it over to Janine Burlingame, Management Analyst in the Public Works Department. She has been working on Morro Bay Transit for 30 years. And with that, it's all yours, Janine.
Thank you, and good evening. So as was mentioned, so we have a structure for how we operate our transit system locally. We basically have city staff, and we have a contractor. And so this slide is outlining some of the different roles between the two. For the contractor, our current contractor is MV Transportation. And what they handle is basically the drivers and dispatching for the service. All of the other functions that you see on the right side are handled by city staff, the majority of which are through the Public Works Department. However, there are some on there, I'm not going to go reading all of them, that are also bringing some support from the City Hall and Finance Departments relating to some support that they give for the transit service in general. So as I mentioned, on the contract side is dispatching and drivers. So for this fiscal year, we are looking at that contract being budgeted at about $265,000. It expires at the end of the year, so regardless of what the council does tonight, whether you move to recommend or direct staff to do the consolidation with RTA or to not and continue operating it in-house as we currently do it, we will need to do an extension for our existing contract with MV so that we can either work through to do the consolidation and once RTA takes over services, or if not, and we are continuing to operate it ourselves, we would need to go out for bid, do a request for proposals for new service, and that would take time to develop, go out, do the evaluation, come back for award, and potentially transition to a new contractor if MV did not receive that award. On the city staff side, as I mentioned briefly, we have administrative support. These are some of the functions out of Finance, out of City Hall, the City Manager's Office that are identified in our city's cost allocation plan. And currently, for fiscal year '25, that amount is a little under $28,000. Right now, these funds are transferred from the Transit Fund that we, the main portion of the funds that we receive from the state, and are transferred to the General Fund to cover those allocated costs that are identified. Also on the city staff side, as was mentioned, there is direct support from mainly the Public Works Department, Public Works Director, and myself. These are not included in the cost allocation plan, and there was an estimate that we put together for this fiscal year and what that would mean in terms of dollar-wise, and that's a little over $69,000. And currently, this is not part of the cost allocation plan, and it is not currently, we're not currently getting any state funding that's transferred from the Transit Fund to the General Fund for those activities. Now I want to talk a little bit about funding, how the transit system is funded, and Fairbox. So the vast majority of our funding for the services comes from state monies, our Transportation Development Act monies. There's two different funding pots for that, and that's the Local Transportation Fund and the State Transit Assistance Fund. Fares make up about 4% of our revenue that's generated that offsets the expenditures for the services. I do note, or I have listed on here advertising revenue. I want to note that before COVID, we did have an advertising program where we sold ad spaces on the trolleys. And this was actually handled by the Community Foundation, and we had an MOU with them where they would handle the activities related to garnering the advertisers, getting signs made, coordinating with the fleet maintenance and getting those signs up each year. And then we split those revenues 50-50. They put it into their community foundation program and grants to low-income families so that they could participate in rec programs. And then the percentage of revenue that the city got went into part of our Fairbox calculation. Since COVID, or during COVID, we suspended that program. And since coming out of COVID, the Community Foundation had notified the city that they no longer wanted to be able to participate or be the ones managing that program for the city, as they had staffing changes within their own organization, and they wanted to focus solely on their programs moving forward. With regards to the funds that we get from the state, as you saw, we had about 90%, 6% of that, the funding comes from the state. There are state requirements attached to that. So in the case of the LTF funds, these must be spent on transit needs first before they could be spent on any other non-transit-related items such as bike path, pedestrian, or road projects. If those transit needs are met, then funds could be utilized for that. We just did a quick calculation since fiscal year 1819 to what's budgeted for this fiscal year. LTF revenues were looking to be about $2.6 million. And over that same period of time, we had allocated about $80,000 to roads. I'd like to note that during this time period, any surpluses that we saw in LTF funds, we had been kind of keeping in reserve because we were anticipating the need for those for local matches, for procurements such as vehicles, but also larger item relating to state legislation for the innovative clean transit regulations, where we were needing to transition our vehicles to zero-emission bus technology. That would require not just local matches or for these vehicles that cost at least double of what they currently are for the gasoline-powered version, but we would need to look at electrifying or the electrification of our grid. So we would be needing to make upgrades to our system as well as the charging infrastructure, and those can be quite expensive. So that's why, over this period of time, you're seeing less of those surplus funds being allocated to some other non-transit-related projects. Another state requirement, and this is kind of the biggie, is Fairbox recovery ratio. So there is a requirement, depending on whether you are urban or rural. Our location is considered rural, so our requirement is 10%, and that's across the whole system. So it does, the state doesn't look individually at the trolley versus individually the deviated fixed route. It looks at the system as a whole. And I have a slide in a moment that I'll show you with some of the Fairbox ratios that have been happening pre-COVID, during COVID, and as we've been coming out of COVID. And there's a process, a four-year process by which, if you don't meet that required Fairbox ratio, that at the end of that time, if you are still not meeting that Fairbox ratio, you can see a loss in some of your STA funding. And there's a calculation for how that's determined and figured out that I'm not going to go into. But we had been notified that for '23-'24, we were not going to be meeting that 10% requirement. And a calculation in the range of $20,000 to $30,000 of penalties could be imposed by the state come '26-'27 if we don't get ourselves back into that compliance. So this is a chart that's showing our ridership, our Fairbox recovery ratio since a couple of years before COVID hit, then during COVID, and as we've been coming out, and with our numbers for, that we have for '23-'24. As you can see, before COVID, we had been well above that 10% in meeting that Fairbox requirement. During COVID, as has been mentioned previously, ridership was pretty much decimated across the transit industry and is slowly recovering from that with each year, successive year coming out of COVID. It should be noted that the state enacted legislation during the four-year period between 1920 and '22-'23 to effectively, basically not impose those penalties on any system that did not meet the Fairbox recovery ratio. That expired in fiscal year '23-'24. And as you see, we're at just under 5% last fiscal year. So what we would need to be doing is more than doubling our Fairbox ratio system-wide in order to be able to achieve compliance and not potentially get some penalties enacted from the state and losing some of those funds that we use for the services. So what are some options in how we can get our Fairbox ratio improved? So the first is decreasing costs. Another way is increasing revenue. And the last is looking at consolidation with a larger system such as RTA. Under the first option of decreasing costs, we really had two options. You have seeking a less expensive third-party contract, which is not really a viable option since if we go out to bid, those costs usually you see go up, not go down. And the other is looking And the other is looking at your cost components of your service and the major one is the drivers and dispatching for your days and hours of operation. So you'd be looking at cutting services. And a quick calculation that we were doing roughly came to about seven hours per week that we would need to cut in order to potentially, it's not a guarantee, to potentially improve our fare box ratio because you're lowering the amount of operating costs at that point in that calculation. The next item to look at is increasing revenue and there's a couple of different options in here as well. One is raising fares. One is increasing advertising revenue, which is an allowable non-fair category that the state allows in your fare box calculation. And as I mentioned earlier, pre-COVID, we had an advertising program where we saw some of those revenues that went in to help our fare box ratio. And the other is increasing our ridership and that primarily you would, you would look at doing through increasing marketing or promotional opportunities. Raising fares comes with challenges. You think it's, oh, that's easy. You raise fares, you're going to get more revenue into your fare box and that's going to help the ratio. But you, you may have price-sensitive riders who raising fares is a kind of a deal breaker and a barrier for them. And so they would then no longer start riding anymore and you would actually potentially see a decrease to your fare box. Or you may see no real change because those, those new individuals that may be riding and the fare you may get from that may be offset by the riders you're losing and the fares that would be going with them. Increasing the advertising revenue, as I mentioned, starting that program up again and getting those advertising dollars, those can, that can help. That would take additional city staff time to develop. It's a very labor-intensive program to do. You're constantly getting in touch with potential businesses, restaurants, motels, hotels, to see if they're interested in advertising. Then there's a coordination and time to get signs made, get those up. And that is taken away from other staff duties that may be of a higher priority. And that alone, you may not be able to generate enough fair, sorry, ad revenue to accommodate improvements to your fare box. Increasing ridership through marketing, a similar thing. You're adding costs to any marketing program you would be developing and implementing. And you may see some improvements into your ridership for that, but you also may see, you may not see in different categories because you would need to focus on what, kind of, what is your, what are each of those services? Who are those target markets? And then going towards those individuals. So in conclusion, between the lowering your expenditures or increasing your revenues, independently, that's not going to achieve the improvements that we need to see for our fare box recovery. And a combination of those may or may not address that as well. But what would be impacted would be your service functionality and that we, you would probably see some deficits in that regard. And that too can in turn lead to ridership decreases. So the other option, and one of the main reasons we're here tonight to talk about, is consolidation into the RTA. So as was mentioned earlier, the state looks at fare box recovery ratio as a whole across the system, not the individual parts. So incorporating into our services and have them be operated from the RTA service, they have a larger, larger number of services they're providing that have varying fare boxes and that can be absorbed something, a system that may be a little less, what's the word I'm looking for? I apologize. A little, a little less of being able to meet that compliance ratio. The important thing here is that there would be no loss of functionality in terms of the services being provided. Incorporation in would see, at the start, would be the same level of services that we're providing, days, hours and fare structure. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Greg who will, will talk about some more of the specifics between the city and RTA under the consolidation option.
Thank you, Ms. Burlingame. And I just want to call out that we do have the Executive Director of RTA here, Jeff Strong, will be available for questions at the conclusion of the presentation. I'll go briefly at a high level over the proposed consolidation that was worked out between staff earlier. Ms. Burlingame, in the structure component of the presentation, talked about what the current roles are. We have the contractor doing drivers and dispatch. We have the city role doing all those other things on the bulleted list. With the RTA, we would be proposing to give RTA all of this, so both, both sides. We'd still would have an administrative function to oversee that contract, but all of those roles that are currently performed, or in some cases not because of lack of staff capacity on the right side, would go to RTA. And I won't read all the way through them. They are in the, in the staff report. So the city role under RTA, what would that look like? Well, we would still retain local oversight of the system. And this is something I want to be very clear about because I know there's some concerns about it. And we have a system that many people love and depend on here. And so that system would still need determinations about what the routes are, what the fare structure is and what the schedule is. And that would still be under the control of the city council. And once per year, at a minimum, we'd review a variety of aspects of the system, including the budget with RTA on the staff side. As I mentioned, there'd still be administrative activities. So in this case, Janine would oversee the contract with RTA. There would be a lot less work on her end to do this, so that would open her up for other, other work that we have in the Public Works Department. But there would, still would be some work here. And we would also be responsible for providing local match for capital, just as we are now. So if RTA is looking at purchasing new buses or infrastructure, charging infrastructure, they may be looking for grants. There'd need to be local matching funds. That would still come from the city, just as it does now. I want to be clear though, that's out of the transit fund, not out of the city's general fund. So those are monies that wouldn't be changing in terms of how we use them. So some positive impacts of such a transition to RTA. One, just a quick nod that we would be able to terminate the contract without cause and the RTA would be able to do that as well. And so that would be written into the contract. We'd likely be looking at a 10-year contract. But if the city, for some reason, were not satisfied with the service, we could, we could back out of it. And there'd be a transition period and we'd have to do an RFP and we'd have to go back to our current system with a contractor and staff supporting heavily the service. One benefit from moving to RTA is we leverage RTA staffing resources. They have technology. The example I always think of is, you know, you can, you can go up into your phone, look at where the bus is currently and when it's coming. The city of Moray doesn't, doesn't have that for its system. There's a whole zero emission bus transition that takes a lot of time to work on, to keep up with the legislation, to keep up with the procurement, to apply for the grants. All that would be done by RTA. RTA is already doing this work for the rest of their system. And so whereas for us, we have very limited staff, we're working on a lot of things and, and so that's something we'd have to focus on. There's a short-range transit plan that we do every few years. We've done it in the past. That's a plan that comes out and we come to the city council with recommendations on changes to fare and schedule and routes. And normally we perform that. So in this case, if we consolidate with RTA, they would perform that and they would make recommendations to the city council. And it would be up to the city council what to do, just as it has been in the past. RTA also has a increased driver backup pool. We have a very limited backup pool. We have a backup pool of one. So if our driver gets sick or is out for some reason, the supervisor has to step in. If they're not available, we don't have service. We just, and this has happened since I've been here, where we have to cancel bus rides because there's no one to drive the bus. With RTA, they have many routes and they can shift staff resources around to fill in those kinds of labor gaps. The drivers are higher paid at RTA than at MV Transit and they have benefits. There's more chances for them to become full-time. There'd be an improved rider experience because it would just be one system. Again, the tech would be improved. And there'd be increased funding from the state because the state incentivizes these sorts of consolidations. And so we're looking at another $15,000 of STA money for that kind of consolidation. One big one that I want to call out right now is, you know, one byproduct of this move would be freed up staff capacity. And this is mostly with management analyst Janine Burlingame. So if she were not spending all the time she currently spends on the Moray Transit system, she would be doing more work and having more focus on the department budget, which means we'd be less reliant on the finance department for some of that work. So there's some spillover effects in other departments. Janine would be very much more involved in capital project administration. That includes reviewing certificates of insurance from contractors, working with the attorney team to develop the contracts, which currently our engineers do. So our engineers are doing administrative work rather than engineering work because there's no one else to do it. That would be potentially preparing staff reports, notices of completion, notices to proceed. A lot of administrative work that again currently is done by our engineers and so they're not able to focus on their engineering and project management. We'd have increased community responsiveness. We get a lot of emails and a lot of questions from members of the community. We don't always get to them. We simply don't have the time. And so this would free up Janine to assist with that. And other projects, as needed, things come up. Council requests analysis into different issues. And again, currently, we don't have a lot of capacity to be nimble and jump into different things. This would allow us to do that. Negative impacts, we think in the first year, and this is an estimate, it would cost the city an extra $16,000 to operate the system. That's detailed in the staff report in the fiscal impact section. I want to be clear that that wouldn't come out of the general fund. That would be covered in the transit fund. And in case it hasn't been made clear, we have more transit fund monies annually historically than what it costs to operate the system because we're usually using that surplus money to save for capital. And so this would not necessarily represent a deficit in the, in the transit fund. It just would be a different use for it. And to close out here, consolidation process. We took this to PWEB. We didn't really bring the finances to them. We asked them to look more at the service levels. They, there was full consensus of the PWEB board to consolidate and they wanted us to bring that to the city council for your consideration. The September meeting is the one we're in now where a city council considers this. In January, if the council did direct staff to work towards consolidation with RTA, we'd want to bring an agreement back to the city council sometime in January. In March, RTA would interview our current drivers. They'd look to hire them first, you know, assuming there were no issues. And they would work out, RTA would hire those current drivers. And in June of next year, RTA would take over operations. The branding would melt away over time. As Jeff has told us, they wouldn't change the stickers on the buses. And assuming that the same drivers are driving the buses, riders wouldn't even know that they're driving under an RTA system. They're the same drivers, same buses, same branding, same schedule, same fares, same everything. So same bus stops, so no impact to drivers. Eventually, as new buses are purchased, the RTA would put their stickers on. So they would learn about that over time. And in the somewhat near term, and by that I mean next fiscal year, if RTA took over the system, they would be preparing the short-range transit, excuse me, transit plan for the city. If we don't consolidate, then as Janine mentioned earlier, you know, we've been on a contract for quite a long time. We're on our fifth extension with MV Transit. And so we would propose going to an RFP for that. The current agreement expires this December 31st. And so we would need an extension to go through the RFP process. So either way, we would be extending MV's contract to around June 1st. And we'd come back to council with that amendment to their agreement. I started this off by saying that our transit system, like every other transit system, evolves over time because of funding, community needs, city goals and ridership trends. And that's really what we're talking about doing here. We're not eliminating the service or losing any control over it. We're just evolving it. And again, the city council will control, under consolidation, fares, schedules, routes and modes. And we didn't talk about that, but a mode would be, you know, do we want a trolley? Do we want five trolleys? That sort of thing. So the staff recommendation is to authorize consolidation of Moray Transit into RTA and direct staff to bring back an agreement to do this. And also to direct staff to prepare an MV transportation amendment to extend services to align up with RTA's consolidation. Big shout-out to Janine, 30 years working on this system. She has been a big proponent of this consolidation. We talked about it early on and I wanted to make sure that this is something that she felt was the right thing to do. She does, and so this is the result of the work that we've done since then. So we'll take questions.
Thank you very much for the in-depth presentation. I'm going to ask a couple of questions and pass it off to my fellow council members. The projected fund balance for transit at the end of the fiscal year, what happens to that money?
Any surplus or that is in the fund balance, that would remain in the transit fund. What we would do if we, if you move towards consolidation with RTA, what would need to be done is looking at, okay, are there capital projects that are coming up? Are there local match requirements that are needed for that? How much, and identifying how much that is so that that could be built into the budget that comes every year for approval. Then at that point, if there's any surplus, once that is handled, then the council would have the ability, the discretion to use that for other non-transit-related services. So bike path, pedestrian or roads projects.
Okay, so it doesn't transfer with the buses and things like that?
There, there would be a negotiation process as we're developing the agreement that would identify what current capital projects we have in this fiscal year that the city would be completing, how that would affect fund balance if there's any, any of those funds haven't transferred from the fund balance into the capital project yet. Or, or what would be handled by the RTA once they take over the service. And so there would be an amount that would be identified that is either going to transfer to and be utilized for transit services and capital or there's an amount that's remaining that the city could then use for those other non-transit purposes I mentioned.
So that transfer stays specific still to Moray Base?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then just on a, on a more upbeat question. I think somewhere in one of the presentations, maybe it was at the RTA meeting or at PWEB, there was a comment about the MV isn't in the system with the RTA as far as bus ridership passes and that would change. Maybe Mr. Strong knows that, that you would have one bus pass to be able to use for all of them? Because Moray uses separate ones right now, right?
Moray Transit has its own pass as well as there's a specific RTA pass. There's also a regional pass that can be used on all fixed route services. So it could be used on our Moray Transit system and then over onto the RTA system. So riders have to kind of navigate or think about, am I just using the Moray system? Or am I going to eventually transfer and need to ride the RTA system? And then at what point, which pass do I get? And what do all these passes do? And so that can create some anxiety and confusion in trying to navigate and figure that out. Having the RTA system take over both services, eventually that, that pass just blends and it's all one pass system.
So simplification, thank you. I was just wanting some clarity on that. Questions to my left? Questions to my left, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Wixson. And thank you, Ms. Burlingame and Director Qualick for this report. I got a chance as liaison for the Public Works Advisory Board. I got to hear this presentation there originally and heard a lot of great questions. And I appreciated also Executive Director Straw's input as well during that meeting. It was really, really helpful to wrap my head around what this looks like. I have a couple of questions. One of them, and I, I think Director Qualick, you may have the answer to this, or maybe Ms. Burlingame. But when you had mentioned that we would no longer have the ads, like that marketing would be taken over, can you give myself and the public an idea of how much we were bringing in on ads on, on those trolleys? Like, do you have a rough estimate as to what that actually brought in?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Ford. We brought in around $12,000 and that $12,000 was split 50/50 with ourselves and the community foundation.
Okay, thank you. My other question here is, this is kind of a rhetorical question because it was asked, or it was brought up at the PWEB meeting, but I think it'd be great for people to hear about the infrastructure that RTA has for EV vehicles. And if you would like to expand on that, if someone, if either of you would like to expand on that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Ford. We'd actually like to ask Executive Director Jeff Straw to answer that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the, of the city council and staff. The RTA, we, the board adopted a policy to move towards zero emission vehicles back in 2018, started building grants for that, and implemented our first fast charging system, a direct, direct current fast charging system at our garage in San Luis Obispo. And that's where we would propose to, to house the vehicles. So the Morro Bay vehicles would be housed there. As we start getting electric vehicles for Morro Bay Transit, they would be charged there as well. Another big piece of this is, is part of our planning is what we call opportunity charging. So as a bus lays over for 10 or 15 minutes between routes, the bus parks over an inductive charger, charger, and it basically tops up the batteries. And we've actually secured funding to do that at the Morro Bay Transit Center. We need it for our Route 15 that goes up to Cambria. We also need it for our Route 12 that goes to San Luis Obispo. So actually, all three services could use that inductive charging. So we've secured the funding to do that and our plan is to start that project in '25, '26, at least the, the back end of it. The, I guess the long and short of it is, we've embarked on this. We've invested a lot of time and money on it. The Route 12 bus, we've been using an electric bus on RTA Route 12 from San Luis Obispo, goes through Questa College and comes to Morro Bay, serves my home in Los Osos as well. We've been using the buses exclusively on Route 12 because the route is relatively flat, relatively slow. It's not a real, you know, not going over the Questa grade, and it's been working very well. So we just gave some reports to the RTA board at its meeting last week. So we've got some good experience with that. This community here would be perfectly, honestly, the Morro Bay Transit Service has a relatively short service day and it's Monday through Friday. It'd be really simple to implement a smaller type vehicle in the city of Morro Bay, actually more, more easily than any of the other services that we operate. The RTA operates the big inner-city services that connect the cities. You probably used to see in the big green, white, and blue buses. But we also operate on behalf of the city of Paso Robles, the Paso Express Services, the South County Services, which are in the Five Cities area. We've got four routes down there that we operate on behalf of, of that, that community. And we operate services on behalf of the county. So we operate services in Cayucus and in Cambria, as well as Napomo and other unincorporated parts of the community. I think the reason I'm bringing this up is the local control really rests with the governing bodies in each of those entities, the city of Paso Robles, the county, the Five Cities area. They make decisions on the service levels, the fares, the budget. They adopt a budget every year. So we use our expertise to provide information back to the entities and they can make the decisions based on that information that we gather.
I have one more question regarding fares, and I don't know who will get, who will get to answer this, maybe all of you. But I used to run, I used to take like 30 kids around town on the trolley when I used to run a summer school program or summer camp. And, and we would get a discount because we filled the trolley and there was a bunch of little kids, like four-year-olds. And, and that was, you know, through our current system. Is that something that we would decide as a city? Or would we have to be more strict in our, how we handle our fares if we were to contract with RTA? I know that you said we had control over fare, but like in special circumstances like that, I'm just curious how that would play out. And then to big, just one more question on that as well. As far as, you know, concerns for, for fare increases, this is just from my own personal information because I'm not sure. Is there a senior discount or is there any sort of reduction in cost for those who are on a fixed income? So those are my last questions. Thank you.
I'll, I'll take your second question first. And yes, there is a, a discount for seniors. The, the fares that we currently have on the deviated fixed route is a regular fare and then the discounted fare. So that can't, that is, can't be, how do I phrase it? It is at least half of the regular fare. So that's discounted. And going to your first question, there, I did have a quick discussion with the executive director before the meeting about those type of special events, like the parade we had and the trolley was a part of. And is there something that we can negotiate into the agreement that would identify if we had specific events like that that the city runs that we wanted to include in and have them provide as service? And he had indicated that they do that with the other contracts that he had mentioned that they oversee as well. And identify a certain number of days in a year and the process by which that would occur, which is, would still rest with the city. Everything would generate and the nexus would come from the city, not somebody calling up the RTA system and requesting service. So there is the ability to do that. And I don't know if Jeff wanted to.
Yeah, a perfect example is the Cambria trolley. The county funded that service for years, but then decided it wasn't working out well fiscally for them. So they, we adopted a, a program where they identify six, six days a year of service. So Planta Rado, the Christmas lights, those sorts of programs. So it gives them six days that we work with the tourism board up there to, to operate. So it's automatically part of, of the budget. If something else comes up and there's another one that comes up, maybe, you know, I don't know, some, we have a dignitary coming to town and you want to do some special service. As long as the city wants that to operate, you can make the decision and then we'll operate it.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Ford. I think she really touched upon some of the questions that I have. I, I love the trolley. I'm going to admit that it is the one that I ride and have ridden many times in my time living here. And so I, I think if I heard this correctly, it would be the system in its entirety being consolidated, both the trolleys and the, the other buses. And so I think what came to my mind was, you know, as we move along here in, you know, looking at our housing and as we move along in conversations about more of the planning that we have with our waterfront and our downtown area, I think what comes to my mind outside of use of routes and changing routes is just our ability to be flexible with that advertising and marketing. And so I think what I'm wondering is I, I see that marketing is involved in a general way. But if, for example, we found a way as a community with other areas, not just necessarily departments, but maybe other organizations, to bring back that kind of advertising component, how would that work, Mr. Straw with the RTA?
Well, I think, so we have a dedicated marketing and community relations manager who handles all of our advertising as well. Last year, or this current fiscal year, we, the one that just ended in '23, '24, we collected $110,000 in advertising revenue. Big parts of that were dedicated to certain areas because advertisers wanted to focus on those areas. Perfect example of that is, is the Avala Beach trolley. We operate that service from Morro Bay, I'm sorry, from Pismo Beach into Avala Beach. And we had, we had targeted advertising on those trolleys that were, that helped with the fare box recovery ratio of that service because it was dedicated to that area. There's a campground, Cherry something in the, in Avala Beach area. I can't remember the name of the, something Cherry Flags, some Flags or something. They worked with us and put specific advertising on the vehicles and we work with them to, we had the big floppy man with the error thing at the bus stop. That sort of thing, we can work and really target it towards those programs because it really is a tourist, you know, attracting service. So that really helped that. That advertising contract alone met the fare box recovery for the entire summer on that program. So we would, we would, so we would dedicate any funds that were generated specifically for the Morro Bay trolley to the fare boxes, fare box ratio in this area.
Thank you, I appreciate that. What, what about branding? How does branding work? I mean, currently, it's kind of odd. You see our trolleys and there's absolutely no branding on, I can't remember if it's the green, white, or both.
Well, that's something we do in the short-range transit plan. We're currently doing that for the RTA right now. We're working with Studio Six, which is a company out of Colorado to help us develop, you know, re, redevelop our brand. You'll notice that the buses on Route 12 right now that come into town, the electric ones, are completely branded differently because they're electric. We really want to look at nature. So they have nature scenes on the side, otters, butterflies, you know, things that, that hearken back to our, our neck of the woods here in the central coast. That's something we could consider too in the next short-range transit plan. I don't think, it's not budgeted right now, but is something that we, we could talk about and, and look at. But I, you know, going back to marketing, the most important part of marketing is good service, good dependable service that people can rely on. And I think that's something that's been difficult after COVID. A lot of us struggled getting enough drivers and some of the smaller agencies have had a much harder time with that. We haven't missed any runs. The RTA has not missed any runs. We've had a lot of overtime, but we made sure that the promise that we published was provided. And that's our schedule. That's our promise. And I think that's something that I, and Director Qualick talked about that, you know, there were some times where you couldn't get enough drivers and service was just shut down. And that's pretty tough marketing.
And I appreciate that. I, I really like our staff and our drivers. I want to shout out to Paul LeRae and Brent, who I spoke with over the weekend and, and really got a feel for their, their life in the trolley, if you will. And I'm dealing with the community at large and how much people enjoy and how many people actually do ride. The other question that I had was the timeframe, the 10 years. Is that the normal timeframe? Do we have to do that? Just curious how that works. How, how is the 10 years determined?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. That's the timeframe that RTA used with Paso Robles when they did their consolidation that has worked out well. And Paso is, is re-upping on that, on that contract. I suppose we could negotiate something different. And if the council wanted to see either a shorter timeframe or a longer timeframe, or maybe a kind of built-in check-in evaluation or something like that, like let's say we do a 10-year contract, but we want a three-year check-in to see indeed what, what are the finances looking like? That's, that's something we could build into it. And with that direction from council, staff would work with RTA on that.
Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on that question that Councilmember Edwards just asked. And did, did you not share during this that the contract could be canceled at any time? And that we, so we still review it each year with the budget? So that would be an opportunity to do a yearly check-in? I know, as you said, Paso did just renew their 10-year contract because they were happy with the service.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Wixson. That's, excuse me, Mayor Wixson, that's exactly right. We would do an annual check-in on, on the budget level. But certainly if the city council wanted a fuller evaluation from staff in terms of how, how things are going, we could provide that as well.
Perhaps PWEB?
Or PWEB.
That might be appropriate place. And then I had a question on the trolley, piggybacking on that also. Thank you. I think when I had talked to you, Mr. Straw, you talked about sponsorships that were being done with the trolley. Our trolley ridership right now in town is horrible. I mean, it drives around almost empty. It's, it's sad to see. And I don't know if our fares are posted on it or not, but the trolley in Avala is free, correct? And it's funded through?
Yeah, the Avala Foundation pays the fares. So they, they pay what would have been the fares, at least they pay half of what the fares would be. And we review every year what the fares should have been. So the next year, they pay half of what that would be. So the advertising that I mentioned through the campground, they pay the other half. So it is a fare-free service and for the passengers, it's fare-free.
So sponsorship and then reduced fare. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Councilmember Barton, questions?
We've been lucky to hear an expansive description of the trolley system and the proposed change. And I think it's, I, I don't have any additional questions, but it's, it's great to hear all this because you don't, you don't hear it normally. So it's nice to hear that in-depth presentation.
Thank you.
I don't know, you might not know this, but, so you mentioned that there were budget cuts in '07. How much were they so that, because we, prior to that, it sounds like, well, as you know, my background dates back to 1970, well, before that, but I was one of the early riders of Dial-A-Ride and very much valued it. And it sounds like we had an in-house running of that until 19, until, for 30 years. So in '07, the, there were budget cuts. I'm wondering how much the budget, budget cuts were?
So this was actually during the recession, which started in 2008 and extended into 2009. We saw cuts to state funding, so those LTF and STA pots of funding I mentioned earlier that fund the, the main portion of the service. We started to see cuts each year. And when we were starting to do budget development for the upcoming fiscal year and looking at what the estimate we were getting from the state, what we would get for that year in revenue, was not going to be enough to operate the existing service. And I apologize, I don't have the exact numbers for you. But what we did at that point was we were evaluating, okay, what, what do we need to do in terms of lowering our operating costs and looking at making service cuts and what kind of service cuts would we need to make? And it ended up, through various options that were evaluated, that we would have to cut service to where we were only providing, I think it was, at that time, we were operating two vehicles for our demand response service. And we would have to cut one vehicle and we would have to cut service more than in half. So at that time, I think we were running Monday through Friday. So it was, it was looking at a severe cut to the level of service. And that wasn't going to be acceptable. So then we were looking at other options and the, this hybrid model that we had been reading about for a deviated fixed route, we thought, well, that could cut a severe, of a big portion of the operating cost because we no longer had a full-time dispatcher that was there almost 12 hours a day, five days a week. That's a large amount of money in that contract. And if we changed to this deviated fixed route, still had the ability to pop off the route and do those pre-arranged trips, so we still had sort of a dial-a-ride function for those individuals who couldn't walk to a stop or who had other mobility issues and needed that extra specialized door-to-door service like we used to provide, that when we costed that out, that we could, with the amount of funding that we were going to be receiving from the state at that point, transition from the Dial-A-Ride program to this hybrid system and be able to continue to provide that Monday through Friday service at the level that we had. Yes, it was slightly different. We did a lot of handholding and care and feeding the first six, eight months of the year, talking. year, talking with the individual riders, having them call up and do trip planning with them to make sure that they understand how the new system worked and how they utilized the system to get to their doctor's appointments or get to the grocery store or whatever their needs were, so that once we started that service, that they would be able to just transition right into that from the get-go. But I apologize, I don't have specific numbers as far as what the amount of the funding cut was.
And were, did, after the, if we ever recovered, was there ever a bump up of that revenue?
So yes, after the state started to come out of the recession, those funding pots started to see more funds be generated within them. I didn't really mention how those two funding pots are derived. They're derived from a percentage of sales tax and a percentage on the gas tax. So when the recession's hitting, people are, they're not spending money, the additional discretionary money, they're not spending, so that the sales tax was dropping. You had people who didn't have enough money to, they were cutting back in other ways, so they weren't driving as much, and so that impacted the fuel tax portion.
Right.
And so then, so as the economy improved, those numbers went back up, and so we started to see our revenue amounts from that before time increased back to that level and then some additional as well as, and it's all dependent on the economy and how things had been.
So in theory, we could have gone back to our original in-house running of that?
Not necessarily.
But then we didn't, we stopped advertising too at that time?
Not at that time. Advertising was still going on. Are you talking about the advertising program?
Oh, the advertising was, you stopped doing that during COVID?
That was during COVID, yes.
So we got back to our original funding?
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean that the operating costs for the Dial-A-Ride system would have remained static to where that we would have been able to change back to that system and use the existing revenues that we were getting at that time. Because operating costs are still going up, you have the driver wages going up, fuel bounces around constantly. There's additional legislation from the state or the federal government that may impact labor issues that then impact operating costs. So with each contract that we would either put out for RFP and award, operating costs are always going up, they're never coming down. So we could transition back to a demand response service and potentially still meet those fare box recovery ratios.
Okay, and then, let's see. So what's the, in general, with the rest of the county that uses this service, is there a rate of increase that they're charged over the years? Like, do you have a range of what that is?
Well, as Janine mentioned, costs for operating any sort of public service have gone up a lot in the last 10 years. We try to keep it as close as we can to the CPI for the, for this area is considered the, it's the Riverside, Los Angeles area. That's what we use for the CPI for this area, the Consumer Price Index increases, in other words, inflation. But those numbers are always adopted first by, we develop a budget, we'll present it to the city council, the city council would bless it, and then it goes back to the RTA Board for incorporation into the entire sort of the big bowl. The RTA really tried to silo it because that board is looking at regional issues, but we know there are other programs that we operate on behalf of these cities. So there certainly is a balance there. We, in terms of, and as we talked with staff on what we think the administrative costs would be, it's really just that we use service levels, hours and miles to determine the percentage of the overall cost. This isn't going to increase the operating cost for the RTA for us absorbing a system as small as this. It's a relative, this program is small, I'll say that right now. Having, you know, a peak of one bus during the weekdays and two on the weekends is very small compared to our existing services. So we're able to, we can mash them together and provide a much more efficient use of the funds. So to get back to your question, I can't predict what the cost is going to be next year, but we, it is, it's part of the budget-making process where we propose any sort of changes to service levels. But again, will we come, unless the city council came to us and asked us to increase service levels, there's not going to be a vast increase in the cost to operate the service. It really is dependent upon the miles and hours that we operate on your behalf, and that's really controlled by you, by your city council, it would be.
Based on what we use right now as the bottom of the range? So, and when you do see increases, does it, is the city charged generally, or do they charge the rate fares, the bus fare?
It's a combination of both, but I will say that the way the mechanism works with our other entities is we present the budget to the entity. So for example, City of Paso Robles, we go to them and say, based on the service levels, the menu you're giving us, this is what it's going to cost us to operate the service. Present it to the board, and the board would allow, would bless it, and then we would make the claim directly to the state and to SLOCOG to get those funds. So we're not, we're not asking for you to, we would never ask for more money than's available for you. Because we make predictions on how much LTF and STA is available to you, and then we'll say, this is what it's going to cost to operate it. If it doesn't fit in, if we hit a recession, for example, we would come to you and say, these are our predictions for your LTF and STA allocations to your city, here's what we can operate. So you still have control of all that.
Okay, and so it sounds like no matter what, so one of the problems I thought was the hardship for staff was that we had to renew a contract? And it sounds like we have to renew the contract either way, whatever way we choose, correct?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. Short answer, yes, but they're very different contracts.
They're different?
I believe you're referring to the MV contract versus a, and maybe I misunderstood.
No, I thought you had to renew a contract with MV either way.
We have to extend it around five months.
Right. So it's sort of like you're renewing a contract, right? You're extending it or you're renewing it. The contract's for a year, so it's, it's like...
Yeah, we'd be bringing back an amendment to the contract too.
So that's, work is still involved?
Sure, so if, and that's a good question, so if we decide to consolidate with the RTA, I mean, we would still be operating the system for another nine months or so, and then we'd also be doing the work of gathering these contracts and bringing them to council, yes.
Okay. And I'm curious, how is the, when you switch to electric vehicles, how is the electricity paid for?
Well, it's sort of a replacement for what we're paying for diesel. We reported back to the RTA Board last month, the cost per mile of the electric buses is significantly less than a diesel counterpart. So if we compare the apples to apples on the Route 12, we presented that information to the board. We expect the same thing to occur here. We buy it through 3CE, what's it called now? The, I think it's called 3CE, and it used to be PG&E in our area, but in San Luis Obispo, we purchase electricity through them.
Okay. Oh, and what if the community wanted to add additional routes? What if, you know, there was some change and people started, you know, I didn't know that, I personally didn't even know that we had this service, so I don't think the people, I don't think a lot of people know about it. But, so what would happen if it increased? If you're going to do all this marketing and it increases, how does that affect the cost?
I think a proposal would come to the city through the city, through Public Works, and then we would work up some sort of cost to, some options that, if somebody says we want to go till nine o'clock or something like that, we could say to you, okay, to do that, this is what it would cost, and we can bring it to staff, staff would bring it to you, and then you would have the option to either fund it or not, if there's funding available.
Okay. And just to be clear, one last question. So this is going to cost the city more and still require staff time?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. We estimate, and again, there's a lot of variables here, we estimate in at least the first year, it would cost approximately $16,000 more. A lot of that depends on how the city decides to handle some accounting practices, and it would still take staff time, but significantly less.
Okay, have we ever thought about making, like, it sounds like it's the ridership and the fare rate that is the ratio, right? Is it, have you factored in if you made up the difference? If you would get more grant money, would that make sense, or?
Thank you again for the question, Councilmember Landrum. So as Ms. Burlingame indicated in her presentation, there are certainly levers that we can move around to try to increase ridership or increase fare so that we meet the compliant fare box recovery ratio, that again, would bring our system back into compliance. We don't see a way of doing that that wouldn't take something away from our service, so...
Well, actually, that's not what I meant. I meant if you subsidize the difference, maybe it's hard to, do you know what I'm saying?
I apologize, yeah. And Janine can talk about that because there are some allowable costs to help out with fare box recovery ratio, like advertising, and there may be some others.
Yeah, so the advertising is one of those allowable costs to factor into your fare box calculation. There's a few others that, maybe Jeff can have, that he spoke a little bit to about like the subsidizing of, subsidizing of fares for a particular group that go towards them, having that free service or discounted service, and then that supplement is able to be utilized as part of your fare box. As for other grants, they're, generally, the grants for transit services are more on the capital side. They're outside of the state of California that has our Transportation Development Act monies that come to us. Most other grants that are out there are for capital and not operating. And I don't know if Jeff has some additional information about other potential non-fare items that are allowable under the state guidelines for the fare box ratio.
Yeah, no, I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. It's fine. I'm good for now. Let's take public comment if everyone else is done, and, okay.
I thought I will open public comment on this item.
Betty Winholz, I want to fight for keeping it here. I think it's really important. I do see it as an outsourcing, whether you go to RTA or MV, I know it's outsourcing if it's outside the town, but we have control over MV. We, you know, as you saw, that their service was basically the drivers and the vehicles, but everything else is what Ms. Burlingame does or the city does. And all those features are going to go to San Luis, to another government agency, and they can make contract with you, but everything's going to go up. And the way I looked at the staff report, it wasn't an increase of $16,000, it was $120,000, because they're charging $369,000, I think it was, for the new contract, and I think what we were saying we were spending was 200 and something this year. So it's an increase, and what that increase goes towards is towards your drivers because they pay them better. But there's no reason why we can't, you know, deal with MV and say, we want our drivers to pay more. So all the things you think you're going to get from RTA, those are things we can do right now, and there's no reason not to do them. And I think the parade was a perfect example, you know, the example that Ms. Ford gave about a group, you know, those are things that are local, small town, we can negotiate with our own company to make those things happen, whereas otherwise, you have to talk to this RTA, good thing, but, you know, oh, you're over here, sorry. And you'll pay for all those things, either whether you put it into your contract or not, whether it's the six days or whatever, you're going to be paying for those extra things. So I like the option too that you had up there, that we go out, if you don't like MV, and it's been a two-year contract, it hasn't been a 10-year contract, so I'm not sure why you're making it so long to go with them, and they're going to be having the vehicles, they're going to own the vehicles. So if you ever change your mind and want to bring the service back, you can't, because you'll have to buy back those vehicles, or you'll have to buy new vehicles and all that thing. And so I think you need to think in the long term about what you're actually doing because you can't go back. I don't think the city will be able to afford to go back. And so I think where we could beef it up, and if you notice the figures that they had up there, that, yes, with the recession, we built back up again, and it never failed until we got to COVID, but you're not giving us a chance to go back up again after COVID. The way we recovered from the recession, we can recover from COVID. So maybe think about going to RTA in two years or five years if MV or someone else can't bring it back up. But I don't think you've given us a chance to keep it local and keep our good drivers and that kind of item. Thank you.
Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking of this, but was inspired. A question I had was, it sounds like when you changed from a deviated fixed route, you significantly reduced your total addressable market in terms of ridership, and I'm wondering if you have stats on how many of our residents would be able to, be able to take the route, how close, you know, what percentage of our residents, their house, is accessible from the fixed route? I think that potentially an option for increasing ridership could be moving back to the dial-a-ride model. And then additionally, I really agree with the sentiment of a lack of awareness about this. I think a better option would be to spend the additional $16,000 or $11,000, we'd be spending extra this year, and put kind of what the city is facing in terms of losing our money because of the low ridership into the Estero Bay News, and I think that would bring a lot of awareness and a lot of caring and use from the residents on that. I just don't, I can't agree at all that we would have the same level of control with moving to outsource this to RTA. For example, with Councilmembers Ford, example of using the trolley for the parade, what I heard were the words like negotiation and things like that, and that all takes staff time. So I have concerns that we'd actually be increasing, reducing control and still spending the same amount of time on this. Thank you for listening.
Michelle Lester-Cattery, Morro Bay.
I think that if we lose control of this, we won't be able to use it for our events that we have, like the boat parade, the Santa, the caroling cops, the, you know, taking our preschoolers or other, you know, schools to different events that we have within the city. I believe that we should be advertising like we used to on the trolley and the buses to gain additional funding as well as promoting what we have. I think after COVID, it did dwindle, but suddenly, we do need to ramp this up, whether it's in the Estero Bay News, whether it's in the Tribune, whether it's in, you know, even on the Morro Bay Friday notice that the principal puts out, because he talks about the library, and he can have a little blorp on there about, you know, take advantage of, and students can have a discount or whatever the situation might be. My concern is that once the buses leave Morro Bay and have to drive here every single day, now we're adding additional pollutants... Morro Bay and have to drive here every single day, now we're adding additional pollutants and additional gas and additional wear and tear on our vehicles because they're going back and forth to Slow every single day. Would they be, could they be housed here and stay here so that we do cut down that additional cost? The other thing is if we do transition to greenwashing, once those vehicles have now become, you know, battery-generated buses, we will never be able to take those vehicles back because it far exceeds what the city can afford. Even if they do any kind of maintenance or updating, once again, you're adding cost onto that vehicle. We can never afford to bring it back to Morro Bay. So I think a two-year contract would possibly be sufficient to look at what is being paid for this program, especially if we choose to do additional advertising to get funds. Once we leave it, once it's out of our hands, that's it. It's into, you know, Big Brother's hands and a bigger, you know, they're going to take what they're going to take. And we're going to get less. And that's how it always works out. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue, Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for comments.
I have one last question, I promise. So since it was brought up, and I actually had it on my list of questions and I skipped it, I don't know how. But so, do you mind elaborating a little bit on what happens if we contract with RTA and then we don't renew the contract? What happens to the fleet?
So if we either go through a 10-year period of contract or we execute the option to terminate earlier than that and want to bring the services back into house and have the city operating it like we do now. My understanding, and Jeff can jump in if I'm not getting everything correctly, but we would, because of how they are, would be separating out the funding that is for the city services from the services that they do for PASO, from their regular RTA services and whatnot, they would know how much funding that there may be is like a fund balance that would come back to the city. The vehicles, I think the way that Jeff had described it during the P-WAB meeting was the number of vehicles that we have in the agreement getting transitioned over to RTA operating the system, if we had a trolley, if we had a transit bus, those vehicles would come back to the city. And I don't know if Jeff maybe has a little bit more or if I've kind of characterized it differently.
Yeah, really simply, like for the case of PASO Robles, when they consolidated into the RTA, we identified the vehicles. And then as we replaced the vehicles over time, those still are, the match is made by the funding that comes to the city of PASO Robles. So they own those vehicles. They don't own them, but they have the rights to those vehicles. So if we were to, they don't own them unless we revert back. So they would go back to them. One thing that I think it's really important to note, though, is that after 2029, we cannot buy an internal combustion vehicle in the state of California. We have to buy zero emissions. So that's one of the things, the next time you replace your vehicles, they're going to have to be zero emission. And that's part of the innovative Clean Transit Act or rule, fleet rule that Janine mentioned before. I think one other thing that I think I failed to mention is because we're an urban area, the RTA operates in four different urban areas in Slow County and into Santa Barbara County, we get to count those federal monies towards our fare box recovery ratio. So we're able to absorb losses at the smaller areas because we have an enormous effective fare box recovery ratio. That's a penalty that you're facing right now in next, I guess it's next year is when the penalties will start hitting you. That is the reason that the five cities, South County Transit and Consolidated, that is the reason that PASO Robles consolidated to us in 2014. They had penalties in front of them because of their failure to meet the fare box recovery ratio. But the RTA is able to use these other funding sources to make sure that we don't get penalized as a group. So that's something I think it's important to mention.
And Mayor, if I may add a point, I feel the need to address that some of the conversations that we're having right now are very good ones, and I understand everyone's concern. But I think they're more placed towards contract negotiations. So right now, the city council is considering a policy about consolidation. And if the city council directs staff to move forward that consolidation, that doesn't mean that that immediately happens tonight. There's a lot of questions still that staff has that we haven't explored because we don't have council direction to yet, but that essentially would be resolved during our negotiations with RTA. And these are the sorts of questions that when we come back with a contract to the city council, the city council can see for themselves in the contract language what our rights and protections are under the contract. And so if we want to, and which we do, city staff will have language in the contract that talks about what rights we still retain, what control we still retain, what options are available to us should the city decide to opt out of the contract in terms of bringing back our buses. I mean, those are things that will be in the contract that everyone will be able to see.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. Councilmember Ford?
That was it for my questions. And I appreciate that thorough answer. And I also appreciate the clarification as to what it is we're voting for tonight.
I'm going to let her finish.
Okay. So I'll reserve my comments and let Mayor Protem Landrum ask her question.
I just have a couple of quick questions. I'm curious, do municipalities pay gas tax on fuel for these vehicles? So do we know how much, if we contract outside of Morro Bay, will that like affect our budget at all, the lack of gas tax?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. So the estimates that were included in the staff report for operational costs under consolidation include cost for fuel. And so that's already factored in there. I don't know that we've pieced out additional costs of gas tax based on more driver miles because of the new location or what would be the new location of the buses. But that wouldn't be some kind of add-on after the fact that would be included in the operational cost that we shared in the staff report.
All right. But we'll be missing the gas taxes within our budget, is what I'm saying, like for that cat, that pie chart of the budget.
Just one moment, please. I have a question here. And thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. And I understand it better now. And the answer is no, that it's not as though only gas purchased within the boundaries of the city of Morro Bay have taxed that is then brought back to the city. All of the gas tax is collected by the state, all across the state, and then is distributed to the cities on a formulaic basis.
Huh. And then I was, I thought that was a good question that we heard earlier, that the statistics on how many residents would increase if we, do you know, like, any, something kind of like some range, Ms. Burlingame?
And is this, is the question based on increased marketing of?
No, no, from prior, when we had Dial-A-Ride to, we stopped doing Dial-A-Ride because of budget cuts. What, you know, like, you would have an increased ridership, which you'd have increased fares if you had better service. So do you know what that is?
For me, I may not be understanding the question. Are you talking about the difference in ridership between the two types of systems?
Well, the ridership decreased. One reason it could have decreased is because the service decreased because we no longer go door-to-door to pick people up. So I'm wondering, like, how that affected the fares and the ratio.
One moment, please. Yeah, and I'll just, I'll chime in here on this. And I think that there was an assumption that Dial-A-Ride service has more ridership than the deviated fixed route service. And if I recall the comments from the speaker, that was partially because the deviated fixed route service only strays three-quarters of a mile from that fixed route and may not cover everyone in the city. And in talking with Ms. Burlingame, the only area of the city that is not covered within that three-quarters of a mile is that Teresa Road area and I think that Quintana, yeah, like, south of the mortuary. Everyone else in the city of Morro Bay is within the three-quarters of a mile and essentially has Dial-A-Ride service. Further, we call it Cholride if it's within the fixed route, the deviated fixed route service. We found that Cholrides have been decreasing. And one of the reasons may be that the Cholride is more expensive to utilize than just getting picked up with the deviated fixed route as it's on its loop.
Thank you. You're up. Councilmember Edwards, comments?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just kind of, kind of make, I think, a couple of points of how this, the ease of what can, hear me out, a little bit of a brain spill here, but the ease of the routes is what I'm hearing, the ease of payment and the use of passes because there would be one as opposed to a few. Driver pool would be increased, but it sounds like, and you can correct me if I didn't hear this right, but that our drivers, our current drivers would be considered first. It sounds like, did I hear, it sounds like that public work staff, we would, you know, be kind of taken back to go to do other projects, mainly Ms. Burlingame's. If I heard Mr. Qualick, at some point, we were talking about the engineers themselves, too, that their time is taken away from projects as well on this. I'm not sure if I heard that correctly. So that is a little bit of a question. And then, of course, P-WAB as a whole was supportive of consolidation. So I just want to make sure those points I have are correct.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. Does that, those comments align with what we've presented tonight? And to answer your question, and I'm sorry, there was a lot there. Can you remind me what your question was in there?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, the engineering.
Thank you.
So our argument is that by consolidating with RTA, we reduce staff time in-house specifically for management analyst Janine Burlingame, but there are spillover effects of that to finance staff. And especially in that her time would be freed up to assist the engineering division with a lot of the administrative tasks that are currently performed by engineers. So it would be more of an indirect benefit to the engineering team because Ms. Burlingame would be freed up to help them.
Was there something else?
Just that the engineers could focus on their projects and advance them forward.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, comments?
No further comments. I'm just ready to.
I'm going to go down to Mayor Protem. Comments?
I am very wary of consolidating and giving up our local control. I'm a big, big believer in local control. And I feel like that's why we're a city. So, and having been someone who has seen the genesis, well, I really didn't see the genesis. I thought it didn't exist anymore, but of Dial-A-Ride from its, it was fantastic service, like for families, for, I mean, that's why I rode it to school every day. I think it's a fabulous, that kind of thing is a fabulous advantage to a community. I know that you're saying that it's still available, but it just seems like once you give up control, it's a little bit hard to get back. And if we did change our minds and decide it wasn't working, it seems like that's, I mean, when you talk about staff time, that seems like you're having to reinvent the wheel all over again. And that seems like it would be a huge hardship. I don't see that would ever happen. So I'm kind of leaning in the direction of keeping it as is. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation, Ms. Burlingame and Mr. Qualick. Thank you for being here, Mr. Straw, Director Straw. Couple of comments before we move to a motion. I'm just going to say, for me, RTA is us. I sit on that board. Your seven cities sit on that board. All of us work collaboratively. We talk about how we work collaboratively with other council members and mayors and all of the board of supervisors. We run that board. So as much as it's not us five, it is always part of us. Someone from our board will always be on that. And tonight, we just appointed a member of our community to CTEC to represent us. So I feel very comfortable with our representation there. And along with our Public Works Department, who meets regularly every month with the transportation. I heard a lot of comments and concerns about the trolley, but from what I'm understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, those are all things that can be built into the contract. We know we want to use it for the boat parade. We know we want to use it for caroling cop cars. Those are things we can identify upfront as extra things we want included. Even when we use it now, it's not free. We're still paying for the drivers and things that we're using during those events. It still costs us to run it. There's still a cost associated. Staff has to make the arrangements. All those things still factor in. I agree with you. And the idea that the driver pool increases is huge because it provides the opportunity for guaranteed service that we don't have. MV is not a local company. They're out of state, my understanding. Now, is that correct? They're no longer in the state of California, so they're not local. You know, we've extended the service year after year after year after year, kicking the can. And so I'm glad that we're ready to look at making this transition and that there is the opportunity on either end to pull out of this contract. But again, I don't think we would want to go into it with that intent. We have representation on that board. And the opportunities with the trolley, again, looking at partnerships, I'm watching these trolleys, questioning, why are we even running two of them? Should we only be running one? What do we do? I'd love to see us explore partnerships with Visit Morro Bay and the hoteliers for circulation opportunities as we're challenged with parking and those things. That's an opportunity for us to find sponsorships, the Chamber of Commerce and that. So I'm hopeful that this is actually going to turn a direction for us and enhance some of our opportunities. With that, Councilmember Barton, I think you were interested.
Mayor, really quickly, I didn't give my comments because I, no, you're fine. And I'll keep it really short because I know everybody is like, ready to move on. I just want to say really quickly that I will be supporting this item, the recommendation to move to RTA. And for the reason is, I have two reasons. One, because of the reliability. I think we owe it to our citizens that do rely on that transit. It was mentioned that they have substitutes, people that can fill in when there's an illness of a driver, that sort of thing. There is somebody to back up and that they guarantee it. And I think that's really important for our citizens to have that reliability. And lastly, because of the fact that we have given a lot of feedback tonight, and a lot of feedback, amazing feedback came from the folks that are here tonight, and I appreciate all of your comments, I hope that all of that is taken into consideration in negotiation process as you bring back a contract for us to review. So that's all I have to say.
So that's all I had to say.
Okay, so I would like to move that we authorize consolidation of Morro Bay Transit Administration, Operations, and Maintenance into the San Luis Obispo Regional Transit Authority, and direct staff to return to council with an agreement for provision of MBT services by the RTA for authorization to execute such agreement pending and conditional upon any required meet and confer or applicable union negotiations. And then the second part of this is direct staff to prepare an amendment with MV Transportation, a third-party vendor providing driver and dispatch services, to extend the current agreement to align with RTA consolidation and return to council for authorization to execute.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And I'm gonna ask the city clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landrum?
No.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
I'm gonna take a five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. We're gonna get to our last item this evening, 9C, Approval of Updated Harbor Vitality Director Classification and Job Description. And with that, I will turn it over to City Manager and our Human Resource Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a presentation to make, and with that, I will hand it over to Super HR Manager, Rachel Hendricks.
Thank you. So tonight is consideration of the new Harbor Vitality Director Job Description and Salary Range. The retirement of our previous harbor director in July allowed for a reassessment of the harbor director position. And we do this every time that we have an opening. We look and see if the job description is still reflecting the majority of the duties that we want the new incumbent to possess. So we looked at the job description and saw that it hadn't been modified since 2012, and there were some changes that after Yvonne Kimball, City Manager Yvonne Kimball, spent time at the harbor, working after the director had left, and as well as the fire chief spent time there, that we wanted to make some changes. So staff is proposing changes to the harbor director position and a change to the name of Harbor Vitality Director. So tonight, we ask you for council consideration of the new job description and the new salary range. All right. And why vitality? So why did we choose that name for the title? Vitality, just with the definition, is the state of being strong, active, and full of energy. It also broadens the harbor director's focus. It will signal a shift towards enhancing the economic, social, and environmental well-being of the harbor and extending beyond just the harbor operations to include strategic planning for our future. This vitality also, the harbor contributes significantly to the city's economy through tourism, fishing, commercial activities, and real estate, and we wanted to capture that as well. It is also part of our city goal number two. So economic vitality is city goal number two, and our goal statement is enhancing community vitality and is one of the city's long-term goals. So with this new title and the new, more economic development-focused or economic-focused job description, the director will align the harbor operations with broader citywide efforts. Currently, vitality and economic development is in no other city director job description. So no one is, no one person or a job is tasked with these activities. This will now align the harbor operations with the broader citywide efforts, and some examples of that are monitoring and staying engaged in offshore wind development, pursuing grant opportunities, reviewing all city-owned properties with strategies to optimize the use or create additional revenues, the paid parking study and proposed parking program that's been, you know, talked about. Those are all examples of the vitality that has been discussed with city goal number two. Other new duties, we actually, in the job description, if you'll notice, we broke them out. The first part of the job description is very similar to what it has been, but we broke out part of the job description to have examples of economic and real estate development duties. And that's to hopefully capture those extra vitality duties and also bring in the candidates that are strong in that, in those fields. Other examples of the new duties that are not in any other director job description is economic development, strategic real estate management, tourism, and business attraction. And that will be working in conjunction with Visit Morro Bay, a chamber, and, you know, potentially being a staff liaison to those. And recognizing that the harbor is a key contributor to the local economy through business development, tourism, and real estate investment opportunities. And another new duty is not just maintaining the status quo, but actively seeking ways to engage and enhance the harbor's role in the community, improve the services of the harbor patrol officers, and create opportunities for residents and visitors. We also look at the salary range whenever we look at changing a job description or posting a new position. And this salary range, the prior harbor director was paid at the same level as the police and fire chief. And that was, you know, before my time, but likely because the previous two directors ago was a sworn safety harbor director. The last harbor director before his retirement, he was not sworn or safety. He was more focused on the business aspect, and did not have the per safety retirement. And this position, while it will be managing the harbor patrol officers, which are safety sworn, they, this person is not expected to be a safety individual or a safety. So they won't have the safety retirement. And we propose aligning this director, the Harbor Vitality Director, with the other four directors. So it is a reduction, it's a small reduction, but it's important for internal alignment and internal equity with the other directors with a savings of about $3,500 annually. And if this should be approved, the new job description and salary range tonight, we will start recruiting immediately. So spread the word. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Is there any, before we get to questions, is there anything else you want to add? City Manager Kimball?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I know we, this subject has gathered a lot of attention from council and the community, and then we're just ready for questions. And perhaps if, with, with our addressing the questions, Chief and I can add to the sidebar.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I have a question. One thing I find unusual is that this hasn't been first vetted through the Harbor Advisory Board. I don't think it has.
I believe some of the Harbor Advisory Board has seen this job description. I believe City Manager has sent it out to them. But it is not typical for the Harbor Advisory Board to look at or approve our city job descriptions.
Well, I wouldn't say they were approving it. I would say they're kind of giving their opinion that, you know, I would value that. I feel like that's sort of what they're there for, is to advise us on harbor-related matters.
As, thank you, Mayor Protem. As HR manager explained, the job descriptions and pay scale are not a, not a typical duties under the advisory committee. Advisory committee is advisory, their duty is advise the city council on the functions of the department. And I, however, I did take, I take the liberty to send the description, the draft document to the chair and harbor advisory committee, knowing that there is a desire to be involved. And then, and I actually, we actually received some meaningful feedback. And I think at some point, perhaps, Chair and some other members may want to speak on it, but I, to address your question, we, yes, we, they had a chance to review.
Okay. Also, let's see. I guess as far as questions, it seems like the job is, the job description is minimizing any kind of boating and ocean experience as a requirement. Am I correct?
So we did not eliminate any boating requirements from this job description. The harbor director and our previous harbor director did not have, you know, they did not have to be, you know, Coast Guard captain or anything as a requirement.
Oh, they didn't?
They did not, no.
Okay. And then, some of the job description seems like it would fall under the purview of a city attorney or an attorney. And I feel like maybe, is it, like, are we sure it's not redundant?
Are you speaking to lease negotiations or?
Right. That sort of thing. I just don't, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I, we have, we have a lot of people that we, that work for the city and have different, have certain roles, and I wouldn't want to overlap that role, because financially, that wouldn't make sense. We wouldn't be, we would be paying for something that we already have. It's hard in the case of the city attorney, because that's something that we contract out with, and so we do have to pay for that. But, you know, I'm just wondering about that. And then also, I guess you could apply the same thing to the economic development part of it, and I'm just not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm saying... I'm saying, don't we already pay for that through, we have a community development director? Doesn't that sort of overlap? And then also, we have, we have a contract with the chamber.
So the community.
And Visit Morro Bay.
Yes. So this position would be the liaison, working in conjunction with those organizations. The community development director does not have any economic development duties in his job description, as it is now. So the primary responsibility would be here to this harbor vitality director. So there would not be overlap. Having said that, all of the, you know, city management all work together with this goal?
Okay. So like, for instance, we had a closed session today that required property information. So that, that you're saying that would no longer be the community development director that would be at that sort of a meeting? It would be the harbor vitality director?
Okay. Let me, let me explain that. I can see that can be confusing because all of us doing so much. And it's, it's, as Rachel explained, none of the directors' job description currently include economic development quotation mark as the part of a duty. However, all of us take a part in economic development. Public safety, the chiefs, the public safety is so, is a critical part of economic development. So what they do is actually to provide for economic development. You can say that. And then labor, HR is doing, labor is a part of economic development. And land, the, the is a part, that's an economic development component. And today, closed session, we discuss real estate. Yes, they are, you could say that's a activity related to economic development. And as far as how, once we have the vitality director, are we, who would be in those negotiation, who would be in the discussion? And it, it, it depends. In the past, past practice, we had, had been, if it's something that planning zoning, real estate and related, and, and then the community development director would be the lead. And if it's a water, waterfront related, then the harbor director would be the lead. And as far as who would really show up at the closed session, I, we didn't really have procedure on these things. It's just, who would be the lead on the project?
But you, you're saying that the community development director doesn't have that background, and this person would, right?
Depends on which, what kind, what specifics we are, we're looking for. Traditional, traditionally defined community development professionals. What they do is that they, they make connections. It's all about connection. So they make connections, they bring, they go to, go to different kind of events. They, they track, they attract business, they retain business. They do a lot of communication with, with potential business prospects and retaining business. And, and then they, it, there is, it's a, they have their, their structure. And none of the current directors are professional. They even have a certification for being economic development professional. And, but none of us have that kind of background. We can do what we do. I do a lot of economic development kind of activities. And I just said, the public works, public work director, he does these kind of activities. And then the community development director has been very active in these kind of things, such as property negotiation, probably related because, just, just because the nature of the responsibilities of community development, they have the zoning and the land use. Anytime you do an economic development activity, you pretty much have to deal with land use and zoning and code sometimes building. So that's a, just kind of natural connection.
But in things like property negotiation, it would be the harbor vitality director specifically that would be present in those?
I, I think from, in the past, that's how we did it. And for the waterfront, again, the waterfront leases are negotiated by the harbor direct, harbor vitality director. And, and I would say that as the lead, the person actually do consult, consult with community development director on some land use related issues. Or if there's fire safety issues, we'll consult with the fire department. If there's safety concerns, police department for maintenance and things like that, it would be public work. So it's really a colla, collaborate.
Right. But what I guess I'm asking is, in the case of like, negotiations for property, that would be the harbor vitality director would pretty much be that negotiator. But, but for all city properties?
Go ahead.
All city leased.
MPT Landrum. So I think it's important to understand the distinction in the city's real estate portfolio. The tidelands trust land is all leased, and so there's just a continual need for management of that. As opposed to the rest of the portfolio, there just isn't as much lease management. And so historically, you know, Director Endersby took the lead as harbor director on, you know, negotiating leases, at least to get it to a place where then, if there were higher-end analytical issues that involved legal or community development, then, you know, he would confer with attorney's office or community development. I think what staff's trying to do here is, I mean, I believe is, the intent is to have a harbor director, a harbor vitality director, that specifically has the skill set to be doing lease management, which is on an order of magnitude much greater for the harbor than for the rest of the city. The real estate portfolio, for example, that, you know, the council considered today in closed session, that's not really a lease management issue as much as like a disposition of what we're going to do with the property, if that makes some sense, for where I think they're going with this focus on having real estate management as one of the skill sets. After Director Endersby left, you know, I think the city's been seeking to, and also just lately, to have a more robust lease management presence down there on the embargoedero. And that's where I think this is going. I, I don't think that the intent is for the harbor vitality director to manage the entire real estate portfolio, of course.
Well, okay, like for, I can give you an example without, I think, divulging any secrets of closed session. If, in the instance of the former sewer plant, if that property gets redeveloped and the city negotiated another lease or negotiated some kind of a sale, having that person that would have the most experience by nature of their job description with those kinds of negotiations, would we utilize them on something like that? Or would we just keep them in the harbor?
Certainly, I can answer that. I think that, this question are good questions because give, give, give council and give us, give everybody the context of the team, the team dynamics here, and also the complexity of what the city is dealing with. And, and so straight answer, short answer to your question would be, we don't know. I, I would actually wanted to promote this team approach. I think we can get more out of that, and especially for important, important pieces. For example, at this point, public works director colleague has been the lead for the wastewater treatment, oh, wastewater treatment plant property, pretty much. But we, when we do discussion, he's, he's lead. But we, as group discussion and community development will, will join in. And finance will join, and then city attorney will join in. And if we have harbor needs, we'll talk with harbor as well. So, but by the end of the day, when we present something together, we'll, we'll know, we'll have a lead. And that's something that the team will figure it out. That's, doesn't, the job description is not going to show all those things. The job description is give example of the duties. So also give, give, you want to attract the people that with these kind of qualities.
Right. Well, they're good qualities to have. I, I just think, I guess what I'm getting at is they are unique to the city so far. And it would be beneficial probably to use them in other areas. And that's what I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah. Yeah. All, all our directors many, wear many hats and often collaborate, have to collaborate with each other. And I, yeah, I can say that with 100% confidence.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Burton? Questions, Councilmember Ford? Questions? Oh, thank you. I'll, I'll wait. I'm going to open public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, council. After reading over the harbor vitality director's job, the only thing, it just seems so broad. And I think Zar brought up some interesting points is that, are we looking for a harbor director to just handle the tideland lease sites and, or the whole city? I mean, it just seems just very, very broad. And so, and it mentions nothing about boating, nothing about safety. And I know that this person is going to be over that, those positions, but there's really no, no description in this narrative about that. And that's a big part of the, the harbor department. As you all know, Yvonne, you were down there. I mean, we get people in there, coming in there with a lot of different problems that had to do with boating and safety. So it just seems so broad. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Cal Myers, a resident here of Morro Bay since 2017. Many of you know I'm on the harbor advisory board. Couldn't resist putting in my two cents. Was a comment about the HAB review. We did provide some feedback in the constraints of not doing it in a public format. So we did provide Yvonne some feedback on the job description. My opinion of it, there's been a lot of great work that Yvonne and, and Rachel had done and the rest of the staff. They've collected a lot of feedback over the years of things that were sort of missing out of the harbor, the economic development, the lease management piece of it. And then seeing it all in writing and looking at it, it, it's, I think, to the point, broad. So you kind of look at it, there's three big hats that that individual has to wear. You know, there's the economic development that we've talked about, you know, making sure the businesses thrive down in the harbor and elsewhere potentially. There's also the, the blocking and tackling of running the mall. That's like call the embargoedero, it's running a mall. So it's maintain the leases, making sure that the, the places are painted and fences are fixed, whatnot. That blocking tackling. And then there's the harbor patrol piece of it. There's actually maybe even a fourth hat is that capex maintenance work, that the docks need to be fixed, revetment walls. There was also a comment that was made about the uniqueness of the title. And that's actually a concern, not so much after that person's hired, but just recruiting. I mean, that's a, it's a, not something you Google search. Well, tomorrow, I want to grow up to be a harbor vitality director. So I'm just concerned about the recruiting piece of it. Are we really going to be successful recruiting somebody? You know, when you do a monster search or, or that, you know, do we have to explain that to, to a recruitment office, recruiting firm? So that's a concern I have. But I, the, the things that they want that position to do, I think, would be a good fit. But hopefully, we can find that uniboard. That's it.
Thank you, Cal.
Betty Winholz, just echoing what two previous speakers have said. I have a better feel for the description now. And certainly, we're looking for economic development and, and continuity that we have had in the past and maybe haven't had so much recently. The piece about the, the harbor patrol and the upkeep of the, I even see the upkeep as being part of the description for someone who's supposed to take care of the lease sites. But I don't see how the harbor patrol piece fits in. And maybe that's why we had a hard time getting the last director, was because we were expecting several kinds of hats in one person. And so I'm, I'm just going to express my concern, and I appreciate the manager's response to my comments regarding that this person, who I believe will have a lot of conflict regarding values, you know, if I'm promoting tourism, what do I do if I'm doing something with wind farms? Or if I'm supposed to be redoing the, the revamping of the vets, revetment, and I have to go after grants? How do I take care of, you know, meeting with, you know, something else? It's, it's like so many things going to be going on. It seems this position's going to have a lot of conflict that I feel sorry for the person.
Hi, my name is Mary Wykowsky. I am on the harbor advisory board and also a member of the Ot Club. I disagree that just because a title hasn't been touched since 2012 that we should throw kind of a rich history of the harbor director role out of the window and change the title. I echo Cal's concerns that I don't think it'll show up in LinkedIn searches, and I think it'll make it a lot harder for us to find the right person for the job because of the title. In addition, I think the focus of the harbor director should be on public safety and maintenance of our infrastructure and also maximizing our waterfront assets. I think the past harbor directors have had more than enough work with trying to do those main three areas, and I don't think it makes sense to add tourism onto their plate as well. I think they should be focused on grant riding. We have grant opportunities with the launch ramp as well as waterfront erosion grants for the revetment that haven't been tackled. And I would rather see the harbor director pick up that kind of work instead of focusing on tourism, which I think should be handled more by the chamber and Visit Morro Bay. No one's touched on the salary yet, but I also disagree with the recommendation to reduce the salary. I think the harbor director gets calls probably in the middle of the night and is the closest approximation also to the fire chief and the police chief. I don't expect the finance director to be getting called in when vessels are sinking in the middle of night or floods or things like that, which I would expect the harbor director to handle. I think $3,500 is something that we could afford to spend to recognize the 24/7 job that the harbor director job, harbor director will do. What else? Just because we have a strong harbor patrol supervisor with Becca, I don't think that means that we should overcorrect and reduce the emphasis of the importance of the harbor director to manage the waterfront safety. I think when there are questions from livabords or pollution in the bay and things like that, the harbor director is the one that will be, you know, asked those questions in meetings and should be the one that is able to answer. I think in order to lead a team and be respected by the community, you need to understand, understand the jobs of everyone who's working for you. And I think if we hire someone to the top of this job that doesn't understand what it means to drive a boat or how metal corrodes when it's sitting in seawater, I don't think they'll be prepared to do the job that we want in this position. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, there's one raised hand in the queue. One moment. Jeff Echols, you're allowed to speak. Jeff, are you there? You have permission to speak. I don't know if it's on your end or. Madam Mayor, we're not getting any audio from their end. I don't know what you'd like us to do on our end.
I can barely hear you, AGP.
Oh, there's no, we can't hear him on our end, so we don't know what you'd like us to do on this end. But he, his hand is raised. And he does have permission to talk.
May I make a suggestion, Madam Mayor? AGP, perhaps you could.
AGP, perhaps you could ask Jeff to make a comment in the chat?
We don't have a chat.
Never mind.
Never mind.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have chat.
Because it's disabled. The chat feature is disabled.
All right. We'll move on. Sorry, Jeff. Oh, are you there, Jeff?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're going to need to speak up.
Okay, I'm so sorry about that. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Jeff Echols, resident of North Morro Bay. I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight. I'm down in San Diego for a housing conference. That's the technical difficulty. Also, a little bit of background, I served as the Chairperson of the Harbor Advisory Board 10 or 12 years ago for four years. And I'm also a licensed captain. I have my 100-ton master's license issued by the United States Coast Guard. I have a real concern with this proposal. First off, Harbor Vitality Director, there is no such thing in the maritime industry. I've been to dozens of harbors up and down the state of California, hundreds across the western seaboard. Typically, there's a Harbor Master. Sometimes, the person is referred to as a Harbor Director, but more commonly, a Harbor Master. That person has ultimate authority over all operations within the harbor. I think what we might be trying to do here, and I applaud the innovation that we're trying to go for, that city staff has come up with, but I think we're trying to pile too many things on one position. So, my recommendation would be that we maintain a more traditional Harbor Master or Harbor Director role. And then somehow or somewhere within the city, there's another adjunct position, whether that's within Harbor Department or outside of Harbor Department, that then would specialize in the lease management for the harbor assets and for the harbor leases. But I think we're maybe trying to just fit a square peg in a round hole here and asking to do some things that unfortunately may not work. The waterfront, and this is true in our town and true in any waterfront town, the waterfront is a very intimate community. And people need to get to know the Harbor Director. And that Harbor Director is responsible for the culture down on the waterfront. And I think you're just asking a bit too much out of this position right now, perhaps at the expense of performing the traditional duties of a Harbor Master. So, I thank you for my consideration. And I wish I could be there, but I'll see you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. There's no more public comment. I will close it and bring it back to Council. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. I think it's kind of a clarification question. I know that we had considered a lot of different things. You know, the original task was, you know, hey, look and see, you know, should we shift, you know, the harbor and combine them into another department? Lots of ideas were thrown out. And I'm curious if maybe the City Manager or another staff member would like to elaborate on how you came up with the idea to, I don't know if I know where this correctly, but not remove the real estate or the management of the tidlin's lease properties? Because that was one of the ideas that was kind of thrown out there, like, should we just remove this completely, put it somewhere else? So, can you explain how that got placed back into this position and the reasoning behind that?
Right. Thank you for the question. We're prepared to answer that question and the other questions as well. So, I'm going to hand it over to my Super Fire Chief. Now, that's, Dan is going to take you through that.
Good evening. So, we went through multiple versions of this and multiple evaluations. We had proposals from the previous Harbor Director discussions with the Harbor Business Manager, the Harbor Patrol Supervisor. The Police Chief and I met and conferred and reviewed all the different documents. And we came up with different plans. And initially, the thought was to separate the patrol function from the business function and look at putting the patrol function underneath either Police or Fire. And we started evaluating that, if it made sense to put it under the Fire Department, and then look at the business function of it under either Community Development or Finance or some other house, and kind of separating the two functions. And as we really evaluated that, we determined that it was going to create more issues than it solved. And we started really looking at the best way to tackle this problem and figure out the best way to move forward that addressed all the concerns from all the different parties. And ultimately, we, you know, spending time down there, the City Manager spent almost a month down there working in the Harbor Office. I've been working down there. And continued these discussions, looking at what other models are. And ultimately, determined that going back to a strong department head is what is needed, but revamping that. And there's, this is a small portion of a larger vision for the harbor. There's some other reorganization that's in the works. But there's some, you know, labor negotiations and things like that to put those pieces into place. So, unfortunately, we can't present the whole plan at this time. But there's other components of it that will address some of those functions and ensuring that the people with the appropriate skills and strengths are in the appropriate positions to manage all of those aspects. What this does is it creates a strong leader that has an understanding of harbor operations. All of the functions in the previous Harbor Director job description are still in here. There's just been new duties added with the reorganization we're looking at. They need an understanding to manage their staff under them. So, the patrol side will be managed appropriately, the business side will be managed appropriately. But they're also looking at the long-range health of the harbor. So, we did take into account all of those concerns. And there are a few other steps yet to come that we're working through.
So, thank you, Chief. We have a prepared presentation. You want to run those slides or you? Do you have the...
We have a few additional slides we can talk through that kind of talks about how we got here. I just kind of gave a synopsis. We could go into that further if there's a need to. It's to the pleasure of the Council.
There's one slide, a few slides, I think, I would like to put on the screen to indicate that the service. Everybody was talking about different kind boating, boating community and emergency response and some other things. Yeah. And so, let me hear. So, when we did our evaluation, we really take all these things into consideration because we, this is a mission, and the person are supposed to address all these. And this, we have not, this portion, we did not change. This is, throughout evaluation, has always been there. There are boater assistance, emergency response code enforcement, facility maintenance, and property management for waterfront and water surrounding Morro Bay, you know, friendly and a professional manner. So, we did not change that. The job description still want to capture all these. And if you were, indeed, it was allowed to ask for a person, but it's, has always been there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then the functions. So, these are still, those are, during our extensive research, we didn't, we didn't change these. So, these things are still existing. Now, as far as the concern whether, what was it? The concern as far as, oh, the job description did not provide the verbiage as far as patrol and then, I think there's another thing, boating community is actually, it does, page 80, the under definition, it says that under Administrative Direction, City Manager, Harbor Vitality Director will plan, organize, and direct harbor operations and economic developed initiatives. And then later on, talk about providing administrative oversight of Harbor Patrol and Harbor Business Functions. And then later on, the last, the last sentence have effective communication with diverse stakeholders, including the boating community, commercial fishing community, environmental groups, developers, DC, City Council Members, Advisory Committee, employees, and the community is crucial. So, these things are, they are being included.
Thank you both for clarifying that. I have one more question, Mayor. My question is regarding feedback that we got from the audience. And it's something that I think City Manager and I have talked about before too, is, you know, is the concern over the title? And I know a lot of thought has gone into this title. I'm not necessarily against the title. I think it represents what we're trying to, what we want from this person. But I do have the concerns about the job search. So, my question with all of that being said is, how long do we, how long do we put this job out there and search under this description? And if we don't get any applicants that are qualified or anyone replies for the salary and also being able to take on this entire description, how long do we give it? Because I know we need this position covered. So, I think we should have in mind, if this isn't working because it's so new and it's unique, that we should have an idea in mind of how long do we pursue this with this title if we're not getting the results that we're looking for?
Okay. Thank you. I, let me, let me answer the title question, and then I'll kick back to Rachel to talk about the process. We, I, we have, in our research, we have encountered titles such as waterfront vitality positions. And so, then we thought about talking, using waterfront, but we want to honor the harbor, this tradition, the legacy of harbor, this word in our city. So, we decided to go with harbor. Now, as far as, do we want, are we, are we, we have to do Harbor Vitality? Can we just do Harbor Director? That's, that's why we're coming this discussion tonight. Now, I'm going to, Rachel, could you address the process? And as far as if, especially, could you, could you please speak to the fact if there's concern we cannot find appropriate persons and what are we going to do? If you have answer.
So, we expect to open the Harbor Vitality Director, you know, maybe potentially this week or next week. We really have two months of recruiting, October, November, before we get into the holidays, which makes it much more difficult. If we have not hired a Harbor Director or Harbor Vitality Director before then, then we will reevaluate. So, both the title, the job description, where we're advertising, do we need to use an outside recruiter, all of that? Because I would say we'd give it two months. I know with our last Harbor Director recruitment, I came in just at the end. But we had recruited, I think, for a couple of months with a outside recruiter and found no one. And then our former director actually sought someone out and found our Harbor Director, who's since retired. But, so, it's all about timing and, you know, just what happens at that time. And I think that that was also during those, the Christmas holiday months. Because I came in in late October, we recruited, you know, in the fall, and then we didn't hire until late February. So, we'll definitely be continually evaluating, and especially if we're not getting any applicants. I think with, City Manager and I spoke with, I mean, with this kind of title, we can advertise, you know, in that economic development realm, community development realm, and harbor. You know, so, it will be more of a broader search.
I appreciate you both elaborating on that for me. And I think it's important because I think that was a really valid concern that came from a couple of community members as well. So, thank you for that. I don't have any other questions at this time.
I also want to add, thank you, Councilmember Ford. I also want to add that we're not, we're not eliminating any of the functions. And in fact, in the job description, page three of the job description, education experience, we're asking for six or more year progressively responsible experience in harbor management, economic development, real estate asset management, government operations, or comparable field, at least three years in management capacity. So, we are wanting to cut our net wide, so then we can get the right person. And I would say, I understand the concern. I understand anytime you do something different is a concern. You do not know what you're going to get. You don't, we don't have crystal ball. We don't know what may come to us. I know for interest of time, we don't want to run the slides, but I'm going to run this one. Go ahead. Thank you.
I'm going to pause you a minute, Council, excuse me.
Sorry.
Manager Kimball, and ask Council, we're at 9:25 right now. So, do you want to finish this item? Do you want to bring it back? We're going to finish it. Everybody has. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I will be quick. I just want to go to this, the comparison slides where, this one. And earlier, youuded to that, we did, we're really looking into these things. Because for efficiency, efficiency purposes, perhaps we operation one branch and then the business one branch, we look at all that. And then, it didn't seem to going to address all the issues. Fire Chief, could you, could you, yeah, Chief, could you please take it over on that one?
Yeah, as I spoke to, when we evaluated separating the patrol function, putting it under the Fire Department, we found it was going to create some operational inefficiencies. Because now, say you have a project that you need to work through to repair a dock or something like that, you have to go through, you know, the patrol side identifying it, bringing it up through the Fire Chief. And then, you have to bring it back to the business side and then through their department head. And now, you're running through two departments to solve the same issue. That's just one example of kind of an inefficiency it created by doing this. Through observation of how they actually function and how closely aligned the functions are, there's too many things where they work hand in hand, the patrol side and the business side, creating the budget, cost allocation for things, tracking expenditures, that it was just going to really hamper their efficiencies. There's a lot of other examples with it as well, but that, those are the ones that kind of jump out. And it didn't solve all of the problems. It didn't, you know, focus on developing the patrol and elevating the level of service they're able to provide, as well as elevating the lease management and the workload the Business Manager has. And so, really bringing it back with a strong leader and then, you know, looking at those job descriptions that people have further down into the organizational chart, being able to realign those and clearly define those duties. And now, you have a strong manager, and then you have people that have specific disciplines that they oversee. The manager doesn't have to be an expert in both. They need to understand how to manage people and manage their staff, but have that overall vision and look at the bigger picture. And that's kind of what was missing, at least right now, is that 10,000-foot view of looking at everything and being able to effectively manage the people that are doing the day-to-day work as well. So, this addresses those concerns in a more efficient manner. You know, separating them out, you address those day-to-day concerns, but then you lose that 10,000-foot view.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Hubbard, questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate Chief McCray, you and your time that you spent there in reviewing this and working there and being a part of the community down there on the waterfront to...
to figure this out. I also want to say how much I appreciate City Manager Kimball and everybody on the staff that's kind of worked on this. And, you know, this has been a challenging, very complex job description to come in agreeance on, and I think perhaps a lot of it has to do with complexities of the job itself and the harbor itself, and what we've got going on down there, which is very different from other harbors in the country. And I think that the challenge has been, you know, through the years, numerous years, of having that balance between the operations side and actual management of that, and then the management of the leases, which is a very different type of management skill. And I do see personally, the vitality part being important moving forward, because I do feel that leveraging the businesses that oftentimes come in to these lease sites, and understanding the various buckets that they contribute to financially, is something that I think is important for this person to understand. This is different. We're trying something new, and that's always strange. And my concern was too, as well as some people mentioned earlier, you know, would somebody searching this be able to find it? And so I, I'm comfortable with the fact that staff has gone so far as to do that, and that this wouldn't be looked over. So that's kind of where I am right now. I understand that there are structural other things that are going to happen, so it makes this kind of confusing, trying to really hone in on what this person, who this person is going to be managing. But I am seeing the importance of some of the additions of the job description. So I'm going to leave it at that.
If I may, just add one closing comment on that. We have an incredibly dedicated and committed harbor staff down there, they're very talented, and they've done a phenomenal job, you know, balancing all of these duties, especially in light of, you know, not having a director right now. And they desperately deserve a strong leader that can manage and provide that vision for them. And, you know, again, there are some other pieces yet to come that will help address some of these additional concerns.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Barton, questions or comments?
No, I think we've learned a lot, the conversation has gone on.
Thank you. Mayor Protom, yes?
I will wait for Mayor Protom.
I wonder, so what is the, like, I'm, there's not that much that's different, really?
From before?
Yeah.
Well, actually, not really. We just articulate the expectations on the lease, yeah.
You're being more descriptive of the...
Yeah, more descriptive, put a focus on it. Before is bleeding into it, you do lease, and you write staff report, of course you couldn't write staff report.
Right.
And we just treated as more a director level kind of expectation, the language, more tailored to director level of positions.
Okay. And then I just do want to point out that, well, I want to bring attention, this is the thing, and I don't know, like, the city in past years had an in-house attorney, and, you know, like, my earlier comment, a lot of the job description could be handled by that person, you know, to, it would be pretty unaffordable, I think, to do that currently in our situation. But if, if the city ever, at some point in the future, ever went back to an in-house, I don't know if that would ever happen, but if they did, what, how would that affect the role of, the roles of this, you know, of those jobs that overlap and are redundant?
Right. I, thank you for the question. I don't really foresee that going to be a issue, of course, I don't know how, I just don't, don't foresee that being a issue, and, and the city attorney has plenty to do. And so, right, so that's just that, I, I don't, I think, I think what I'm hearing your concern, just if, if that really happens, we'll have in-house attorney, and this person going to overlap, and this person can, what they're doing, and at this point, what the person was doing, negotiating all these things are not, are not something that I don't, I can't speak for the city attorney here, we ask him, is different. The city attorney are helping, but it's on the legal terms, and then the director has doing the, the greedy, the details, and city attorney oversee the legal piece of it.
So, so in our current situation, if, if we had this really spelled out job description, then that person would not have to consult with the city attorney so much, they would already, they would be tasked already with having to know how to do this, that sort of thing.
City attorney was still, under the city's ordinance, the city attorney are, duties of city attorneys are to review and the contracts. So if you're talking about leases, I still, I know, it doesn't matter where your attorneys, who are, and that's attorneys will, will need to approve.
Okay.
For, right?
And then the last question is, you're thinking that you're going to, like, is there any way to, to put in the job description harbor director slash vitality? I don't know, to like, make it more familiar, but still...
Attractive skills, right.
And still be able to list it in those categories? Is there some way to?
We, we can, we, let us, if that was, that's the breaking point, if that's a concern, we can totally talk offline, and to see if we could, you know, keep the harbor, harbor director, but when we advertise, I don't, Rachel, do you have anything that you can, you want to speak to that?
We did discuss that, and we did look at other cities to see what their job descriptions were like, and, because we did discuss, you know, harbor director slash economic vitality, and, you know, that we felt that those, that slash, and that made it seem like there were two separate jobs, where really we're talking about the harbor's, you know, vitality. So it is just one job.
So, okay, I kind of, I wanted to, I hear the comments, I understand the concern, the concern in that there's a patrol, there's so many things, what are we going to do? And I really like Mayor Protom, and thank you for your comments, you, you just summarized so right, it's really just not much, not, this, this new person, this new job description, there's really not, there's very similar, it's the same thing as before, we just added more things on the economic development, and because through our research, that, that piece, the financial piece, the bringing money in, the revenue piece is so important, and not, it's, it's that, this is not going to work without the current, the current strength of the staff. We, as Fire Chief stated, that the current team are, are strong, are dedicated, and then we, we felt like we should, we'll be able to get somebody who is able to think from, from a global level, and a more, bigger picture things. Whether, we were not expecting this person to go rescue a boat. Of course, if the person has, has a skill, that's great, but that's not expectation. The patrol officers will, will conduct that kind of, that kind of duties. But yes, we, we foresee the person need to be the front and center with the community, and always be there for the community, be responsible, and build a team, boost, build a team, and set expectations, monitor the progress, and help team grow together. And also, of course, folding and all the other departments collaborate with original partners, the tourism, the Chamber of Commerce, many has, like, all of us, many, where many has, but if you hired, you hired this kind, this, as I get comments from this, I'm just going to speak very candidly, is, we pay a lot of money, we expect a lot of somebody, and we, we really want somebody to have these kind of skills, is executive level of skill. We, not all of the directors, like I said before, all of city directors do these things, balance, constantly balance, conflict interests, and, and what, which one should I go, which way should I go, and, and if I do this, I'm going to hurt this, and that's just, every day, we do that. That's, I appreciate the sympathy of, of the difficulty of our job, but that's the expectation. So I wouldn't concerned, I wouldn't concerned about the conflict, and, and, you know, the values and all that, we needed the right person to put everything together. I would offer one thing, I know, I'm going to put Fire Chief McRae on the spot here, this also would not work if Chief McRae is not here, is that he had graciously agreed to, after this is finished, after we find somebody, he, he was staying on to provide guidance, so that the progress has been made during this interim period, with, especially the patrol portion of the department is not getting lost in the shuffle. And, and I wanted, I will, I leave to Chief McRae to speak to that.
Thank you very much. So, you know, we're, I'm working, you know, pretty closely with the harbor patrol staff to look for ways to improve operational efficiency, elevate what we're doing, look for ways to, you know, mitigate, you know, risk to the city, things like that. And all of that progress, we're going to continue with that, and when the new director is in place, continue to be a mentor, help with overall, you know, city emergency management, they'd be a key player in emergency operations, center functions, and just continue that development, training, and just be an additional resource for that emergency response side. You know, they have a strong harbor patrol staff and leadership on that side as well, but just from that emergency management side, you know, be an additional resource.
So not all, not all harbors have tidelands leases, so that's kind of, I mean, it's not unique to Morbey, but it's, we're one of few. I wonder if, I'm kind of stuck on the name, on the title, I kind of worried about that. And then also, if we do, I mean, it's a unicorn position to kind of fill always, and we've been lucky sometimes, and not so lucky other times, and like, the, the makeup of the person, and what they've specialized in, and things like that. But if we found someone, I see here that the job description isn't focusing so much on the safety aspect, and if we found someone that had that, as well as the other things, then does that fit in too, or how, how do we handle that? If they're able to do the safety as well as the economic part?
I, I mean, I think that that would be fantastic, that would be a unicorn.
Uh huh. Well, that's what we were always wanting.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that we're either going to get somebody with a strong background in harbor and harbor safety, or somebody with a, you know, an economic development type background that has, you know, the tidelands trust, or that kind of, you know, leasing abilities and skills. So it's, it's likely going to be an either or, and that's where we have the fire chief that can help get them up to speed, you know, along with the harbor patrol supervisor on that safety aspect.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that's kind of been the dilemma that we faced, and been the concerns, is it's always this pendulum. You get, you know, a strong leader on the harbor patrol side, or a strong leader on the business side, and it never really develops both sides of the house equally. And that's what we're attempting to do here, with looking at, kind of revitalizing the organization, looking at the job duties and the director's duties, is, the need is to balance those out and look at both sides of the house, and that's what we're trying to address. Instead of looking for somebody that has, you know, that one in a million background of, you know, harbor patrol experience and water rescue experience, and also has all the experience in economic development. You know, it's, you're going to, you know, really struggle to find that. So we're, we're really focusing more on an economic development background that understands waterfront, has some understanding of harbor operations, but strong staff on the patrol side, and more of that management, and then use, you know, special experts in the patrol side in, in other positions in the organization.
Okay. All right. I, I'm sorry to go on and on about this, but, I mean, that is the, the harbor is really the essence of the city, really.
Right. And, and then, you know, I like to go on and on about this as well, because we, all of us put so much work to it, and the harbor really is, cities, I agree, is the biggest asset of the city, and then we were trying to create a position to be able to articulate these skills, so that we attract people that can be able to leverage these, the, our, the asset, the harbor, and then to produce, to bring results, bring outcome. And I would say that really, you know, strong this, strong that, first and foremost, this needs to be a strong leader, and so that you can really lead, and, and, and then with those skills that experience, you provide a different perspective. Again, I, I just think that this is not, this is, this is, we want to be a bit broad, and then when, HR manager and I spoke about the recruitment, we're going to send this to a broader scope, and so that we can, you know, have some choices. And when, I wanted to say that when we were, when I was, when we were in DC, and with C-MAN folks, and I want to talk to them, and a lot of the managers there, they didn't have any harbor experience, but they're, they're the harbor, is, in that they're not boating person, but they, they manage, they manage the district, they do different things. So I think it's, it's a, it's a possible, it's going to be very unique, just as everything, you got to find the right person, and hopefully, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Kimball. Chief McRae, thank you for putting your time in down there and staying down there, I appreciate it, I know it's a nice view, but really appreciate that, and thank you for HR Director with all your work on this. I share the concern, I'm going to wrap this up because it's so late, and so I'm going to try and make my comments as succinct as I can, and skip the questions, so we can get to a motion. I agree that, that really, that it's just more descriptive, and doesn't, doesn't take away the requirements or the boating experience, harbor experience, those are all included in there. I think maybe the concern, and I share that, is that you're leading with, with the harbor vitality, so it seems to underscore maybe the balance of the fact that we do want somebody with water experience. We've kind of gone from these extremes, where we had somebody promote from within, who had all the harbor patrol experience, but not the experience necessarily in lease management negotiations. Unfortunately, you know, there's been a good team built up through that, but a lot of things have changed in the economic world, and, and how we manage our leases, and the desire of this council to try and turn the corner on some of that. So there is a strong need for that. I, I am not, the redundancy, I, I agree with that. We are contracting with the Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development, that's their responsibility. I see a role that our Community Development Director plays, that was part of their contract with the chamber, to work with him. I would see that it would be part of the, their contract to work with the community, or the harbor director, I do prefer harbor director. Not harbor master, harbor director. Not their, not our responsibility to reach out to them, but theirs to reach out to the harbor director. That's our contract, so I'm not as interested in that aspect of it. I'm more focused on the opportunities to do harbor infrastructure, and this person to have that ability to make those things happen, because they just haven't, so much has gone by the wayside. And to be able to negotiate what I feel might be a better position for the city with some of our new leases and things as they come up. with some of our new leases and things as they come up. We were stuck with old leases that were expired for 10 years, and nobody, I mean, that's just unacceptable. It's unacceptable. It's a loss of revenue to the city. And there was no reason those things should have ever happened. And it's really disappointing. And I'm hopeful that with this new Harbor Director position, they will be more focused on balancing those things. Because without that, we don't have the revenue to fix the infrastructure. So it is an extremely challenging position. There's not a whole lot of harbor people out there. And I don't think we're going to be able to go steal somebody from Santa Barbara or somewhere where they have that experience. So it is extremely unique position. I hope that with that change of adding the vitality, it helps attract a different pool. But again, I would not want to take away some sort of water experience, whether it's managing lakes somewhere or some other type of, you know, boating community, not necessarily going to be Tideland's. Maybe it is. And yes, I do agree, City Manager Kimball, when we were in DC, a lot of those people that were there representing those communities did not have boating experience. But we were the little fish in a big sea. And they all have a whole lot more staff than we do. So we don't, we don't have that luxury. So with that, I am going to make a motion to approve 9C and ask for a second. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Landrum?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. And I hope that we'll get a check back on how we're doing with that position. And there'll be some adjustments if need be, future agenda items? What? No, it's all 9C. Future agenda items? With that, we are adjourned.